Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna start with our C items. We have no actions, reportable actions from closed session, but I do need a motion on our expulsion, student expulsions. First, I need a motion on Resolution Number 028.
Move the recommendation of the panel.
Second.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please, Renee. Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Ayes.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Motion carries, and next I will need a motion on Resolution Number 029.
Move the stipulation.
Second.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Pew. Roll call vote, please. Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I need a motion on Resolution Number 026.
Move the approval of stipulation.
Motion by Director Carl, second by Director Pew. Roll call vote. Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Resolution Number 030.
Move the stipulation approval.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Pew. Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Motion carries. And last one, Resolution Number 027.
Move the stipulation approval.
Second.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Pew. Roll call vote, please. Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, which brings us to C3, Statements of Abstention. Any? Seeing none, we'll go to C4, Adjustments to the Agenda. None of those either. C5, Board Member Request for Information. C6, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Board Meeting Held on April 12, 2017.
Show move.
Second.
Move by Director Kristoff, second by Director Pew. Roll call vote, please. Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. So that brings us to C7, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board on non-agenda items. Comments on the items that are on the agenda will take place during the discussion on that agenda item. You may address the board on matters within the subject matter of its jurisdiction. Please submit a speaker card if you haven't done so and you want to speak to a non-agenda item, please do so now. Upon recognition by Board President, please approach the podium. We can take no action or have no discussion on any items not appearing on our agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and should a member of the public have comments that pertain to a complaint against an employee of the district, the board advises that the matter should first be pursued using appropriate district complaint procedure. With that, I have Ari Rosenthal. And after Ari is Elias Rosenthal.
So my name is Ari Rosenthal. I'm a junior at Maria Creo High School. And before I begin, I would like to first thank all of the members of the school board for being, for all the work that you do on behalf of students in Santa Rosa. Thank you for being the voice for students in our city. So I would now like to speak regarding the recent S-Back testing that took place at Maria Creo High School. Two weeks before the start of AP testing, high school juniors spent precious hours of class time to take a state exam. A week's worth of English classes and a week's worth of math classes were spent on the state exam. The classes before the start of AP testing were not spent reviewing the class material. They were not spent studying for the exam. Instead, they were spent taking a test that is still under development. It should be mentioned that S-Back testing does have its benefits, whether it's helping teachers to determine the skill level of their students, or it's helping the students to get into college courses that fits them. However, S-Back testing must not come at the expense of AP classes. There must be a way to have the benefits of the test without stopping AP classes. A solution could be as simple as moving the S-Back testing so that the dates do not interfere with AP classes. I hope that next year's high school juniors, who work very hard for their AP classes, will not be interrupted by S-Back testing. And I hope that you, the school board, will ensure that S-Back testing no longer interferes with AP classes and our learning. Thank you.
Very well said. Elias Rosenthal.
Thank you, members of the board, for this opportunity to express an issue I believe must be addressed. My name is Elias Rosenthal, and I am currently a junior at Maria Creo High School. Being that my peers and I will soon be off to go to college, it is vital that we receive the best education possible in high school. However, I have noticed that in history textbooks we are reading, there is a constant bashing in false information being taught about the only democratic nation in the Middle East, Israel. As a strong supporter of the Jewish state and a constant visitor to the nation, I have seen the remarkable miracles this country has performed for the entire world. Whether it's developing technology allowing wheelchair-bound people to walk again, being the only country in the Middle East who have gay rights, or developing the drip irrigation system that farmers all over California, including Sonoma County, use to irrigate their crops. But rather than our high schools' textbooks focus on these lifesaving accomplishments, we are falsely taught that Israel is an occupying apartheid state persecuting Palestinians. For example, in the World Culture Textbook published by Princeton Hall, which is used by all freshmen, the opening sentence about the land of Israel says, quote, "The land now called Palestine consists of Israel, the West Bank, and the Gaza Strip." This is absolutely wrong. There is no land called Palestine. Unfortunately, my fellow peers believe the information in this textbook and go out in the real world believing that Palestine exists on the map. The book then goes on saying, quote, "Israelis have seized much of Palestinian land in 1967." Again, this is false information, as Israel was attacked by three Arab nations seeking to destroy not only Israel, but all Jews living there. The land gained by Israel in this defensive war was legal under international law, and it ensured that Israel would always have safe borders. Not to mention how Israel gave up the Gaza Strip to Palestinians, which is currently being controlled by the terrorist group Hamas, which has since 2005 launched over 10,000 rockets into Israel, killing innocent Israeli and American civilians, which is not mentioned in the textbook. The reality is, Israel is a beacon of hope to nations all over the globe. Yet these facts will not be known by high school students reading these textbooks. These books paint Israel as an aggressor, as a nation seeking to do harm to others, while never mentioning the daily threat Israel faces from its Arab neighbors. As part of the Board of Education, I urge you all to ensure that textbooks being issued to Santa Rosa schools are thoroughly fact-checked and provide the essential information that students deserve to know when addressing global and domestic issues. The American-Israel relationship will always be united in strength. But future generations must know the truth about the only democracy in the Middle East. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if it's the Rosenthal family speaking gene or Maria Creo, but someone's doing a good job. Will Lyon.
Good evening. Well, hold on a second. I can't take your stance like this. Good evening, Will Lyon, Vice President of Santa Rosa Teachers Association. I'm gonna walk a fine line here. We are not allowed to talk about, we're not allowed to bargain in public, but I think I'm allowed to mention my concerns about bargaining, so I'm gonna try to do that in a way that doesn't break any rules. But not allowed to give specifics about what happened at arbitration, but we, has been released that we didn't agree on anything. And the next date for arbitration has been set because of calendar reasons, and there's a lot of people and a lot of calendars, for May 31st, not April 31st, May 31st. That happens to be the Wednesday before the last day of school, and the teachers are like crazy, everybody's crazy busy. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a rough day to choose it anyway. The thing that I'm concerned about is there's a whole lot of things that need to get bargained, that I think, I think should be bargained by the end of the year, that I don't think could happen in one day. And if it did happen on that day, SRTA, under our own bylaws, would not have time to ratify any agreement before school gets out for summer. If it, if we don't make any agreements on that day, we would be bargaining into summer and likely coming into next school year having worked an entire year without a contract and coming into the next year without a contract. So I'm really glad that even though we've worked all year, that we still honor the contract and we haven't had any issues with that. But the idea of running into next year without a contract, I'm nervous about that. Besides the compensation issues and healthcare and other stuff that are being bargained by them, and I know they're doing all that, there are other things I'm concerned about that are on the table to be bargained, that we're having trouble getting to, including an MOU on adjunct duties and minutes, our staff meetings, that expires on June 30th. I wouldn't want to open next year without an agreement about how many meetings and adjunct duties we do. I'm worried about summer committees. All the committees that generally get paid the extra duty rate, all are subject to negotiation, and zero committees or trainings have been negotiated for the summer, so I would like to have those in place. That includes BEST+ training, which I signed up for, and I would like to, I would like to attend it. It hasn't been negotiated yet. Curricular committees, we haven't established.
Mr. Lyon?
Training.
Yeah. You're really.
All right. I'll leave it there. I'm concerned about it. I know you can't do anything about it today. I just wanted you to know that I'm concerned about it. I have faith that both of our sides could get together before the 31st. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much, Mr. Close.
Okay, Report, Santa Rosa Teachers Association. President Ola King Clay.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent, and Directors. This is the last Wednesday of the month and the first night of a new moon. As my Native American relatives would say, this is the time to start a new project with a new attitude. By the way, Happy Pretzel Day. If you didn't get one today, get one tomorrow. With the remodeling of several schools getting underway, I'm sure the issue with HVAC and leaking roof will disappear on a happy note. Lights, lights, and more lights. I am so looking forward to seeing Piner High Under Hills Football Stadium lit like a holiday tree. This has been in years coming. SRTA hopes that the issue of out-of-country teachers will have a resolution before next school year. Absenteeism, oh my gosh, truancy. Two big issues and concerns shared by both teachers and admin. The grant for 2.4 million, almost a billion, but millions, I'll leave it there, should provide us with a system capable of training a strong staff, adoption of a new process and procedure to better manage truancy and absenteeism. Working with both students and parents will add to our ability to help them focus on the importance of education, and as we all know, education is the great equalizer. Some good news and some sad at the same time. As of today, we have 26 teachers that will be retiring as June 2nd, last day of school. With this number, they have collectively taught a total of 599 years. Oh yeah! That's a long time. I wish we lived to be 599, but you know. And it was all for the children, for their students, for the love of teaching. And when I talk to some of them, that's what they say, they'll miss more. The students, the conversations, they will miss the lease paperwork. Got it. And next, a special thank you goes out to Director Ron Kristoff and Director Laura Fong for showing up last night at our SRTA Student of the Year Awards. It was an awesome event. 23 fantastic students were presented with a plaque and also a gift, a certificate to take home and hang on the walls. And then, of course, we had that live entertainment. And also, a special thank you to Big Steve Mazzara. He was there setting in the audience as well, and I do think he took a couple of pictures of us onstage. Is that correct, Steve? Thank you for posting on Twitter. And here we go. Words of wisdom. I'd like to leave you thinking. As leaders, we need to start with a purpose to make sure we are doing what we need to be doing. Adding a compelling vision to give people something clear and meaningful to focus on. Mix purpose and vision with heart to bind, with determination, courage, and conviction. Add a healthy amount of attention to be presented and aware of the now. We are living into now. This is 2017. And as I always say, working together as a team, we will definitely move forward. If we don't work as a team, nothing's gonna happen, positive. With that, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. CSCE report. Is Tammy here? Nope. Superintendent report.
So pardon my voice. I'm going to have a little cold. Welcome, everybody. I am shocked at how fast this year has gone. Director Fong was just saying, is there really only six weeks left of school? It's hard to believe. This week, I, these last couple of weeks, I've had the great opportunity to meet with Congressman Huffman and Thompson, specifically called to a roundtable to hear from the school district about immigration and how it's affecting our student body, how it's affecting our families. And so we had the opportunity, along with about 30 or 40 other community organizations and entities, to have that discussion. And then got to hear from them about what's happening in Washington and at the level where they are participating in working through some of the things that I'm sure all of you have heard about with regard to immigration. Those dialogues will continue, and I'm very appreciative that they ask us to be at the table to entertain in those dialogues. Next week, we'll be meeting with Mike, Senator Mike McGuire. Our focus there will be a little bit different in regards to the budget of California and how it affects our school district, and as you all have heard in many ways, in particular about our pension, and what's gonna happen in the future and for the, for the state to actually, to truly hear the potential impact it has to our school district and then our kids. Last night, we had the opportunity to meet with the NAACP who invited us to come in. If you don't know, the NAACP does a report card of districts, police, sheriff, supervisors, a number of different entities. I can say that I'm glad it's a growth process, the NAACP. And when I first got to Santa Rosa City Schools, I think we were about a D minus, maybe edging towards a failing grade. We moved up to a C+, not that I think we're gonna settle for that, but they are very appreciative of our work in restorative practices, in our implementation of our LCAP, in the way that we are looking at resources and allocating resources. And so we continue the dialogue with the NAACP. I have, I have here copies of the data we provided for them, and it's specific to African-American students in the population in Santa Rosa City Schools, as well as their cohort graduation rates and suspensions, their A through G college completion rates. And so I think it's very interesting when you look at this data compared to the rest of the district, where we are improving and where we need to continue to grow. And finally, we will be having resolutions for a number of things. One of the things is Asian Pacific Heritage Month coming up in May. And a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Judy Sakaki from Sonoma State University. She's the president of Sonoma State University, as well as Dr. Chong, who's the president of Santa Rosa Junior College. And our topic was how three Asian-Americans ended up being leaders of three of the largest organizations in Sonoma County. Is it a phenomenon or a strategy? So we will continue to explore that topic as we move forward. And then next week, Dr. Sakaki and Dr. Chong and myself will be speaking at Santa Rosa JC. I didn't create this title, but this is the title. It's Asian Pacific Americans: Trailblazers in Education. So that's on May 2nd at noon, and so if you're around and can come by and listen, we appreciate, appreciate that. And finally, I can't help but comment to the Rosenthols. I think what we just heard today is a very important reason why we need to have them, or at least what you wrote, presented to our instructional materials committee in terms of the textbooks. Because I think that's something that we need to look at. So thank, thank you for bringing that forward. And if you could connect with Dr. Guzman, right there, about that, that would be great. And then, for the testing situation, I also think that we need to hear from you. And Dr. Guzman, let's get him together, Ari together, with the appropriate people in district office to look at the scheduling of S-Back testing and what we can do to try to resolve that. And let's utilize some brains over there to help us problem solve. So I end with that. Thank you. Thank you.
My report is I had the pleasure of speaking at the Leadership Santa Rosa Education Day with, on a panel with Dr. Guzman and Bonnie Rains, former teacher and now Tulsa in our district. We talked about lots of things. Dr. Guzman and Ms. Rains talked about CNI issues, including Common Core and maker classes and developing critical thinking and 21st century skills. They were really impressive, and the crowd was very engaged. I talked about budget a little bit, about the Safe Haven School District and about the A through G qualifications or certifications. And it was really an engaged group, and they gave some great questions. It was nice to see members of the community so interested in our school system and also to see how well our staff members did on that panel. I also had occasion to meet with Frank Chong after he was a guest at a College Tea Project event, and he wanted to tell me about his panel with our superintendent and Dr. Sakaki. And what he said was, "Your superintendent blew us all away. She makes us look bad. She's amazing." And I said, "Yeah, sorry she makes you look bad, but I think that's good. I agree." So we agree with that. That's the end of my report, but I'm going to go into board committee reports. I have to catch up on three TadCom reports, three TadCom meetings. February 21st, we talked about discipline at elementary schools and teachers concerned that they weren't yet really trained on the new disciplinary procedures, nor did they understand the proper line of communication about where to direct complaints. So we addressed some of those things and got some feedback that the district is putting in place about creating some flow charts and org charts where, that will help people know who to report to when they have questions and comments. We got, talked about the feedback that you all generated for our budget solutions and using that very robust survey you did, and again, I thank you for doing that work. On March 28th, March 28th, about appropriate topics, or as Mr. Lyon calls it, what is TadCom-able? And basically, the kind of take-home message of that is that it is to remind everybody that TadCom is about board policy and to talk about the kind of limited role that our board has, but that it's not a place or it's not a healthy thing to use it to kind of leapfrog over staff if you haven't gone through the proper chain of command and how it is better for our organization, for every staff member along the chain of command to understand what problems are out there and what concerns people have and be given an opportunity to solve those. Then we talked, our second agenda item was restorative practice is a mindset, not a strategy, and that was a presentation by Mr. Mazzara, who talked to us about the, and Kesa Ennamark, who talked to us about the strategies that we have in place, and also about where we're at in implementation and training of those, because we are, it is a work in progress, and only certain schools have been fully trained, and we're kind of marching towards being fully trained on that. Then last week, just last week, we talked about the thought exchange survey and got some feedback about that from, about how that went. I know there were some concerns that it wasn't identified as the LCAP survey, and I think it was sent back out, identified as such. And we talked about those results. And then, we also talked about the DOT and... It's hard to remember all the educational names and acronyms. Caltern, which is working with labor and management ability to work cooperatively together. And we talked, actually had a really robust and open discussion about building trust and relationships between all the different parts of the district team, and that we are a team, and between labor and the board and management, and how do we build trust in that? And that open and honest communication with, you know, an eye towards progress and problem solving was really part of that. And along those lines, I wanted to mention that I think the negotiation teams are looking forward to getting together on May 31st. I know that was difficult to schedule and was put out to May 31st primarily because the CTA representative was not available, on the day that the mediator was available. So I think it's important that we all have all the facts and engage in open and honest communication on all these things. It's really good to see everybody here, by the way. Forgot to start with that. All right.
President Close, may I say something about the LCAP?
Yes.
We didn't send back out that original thought survey. What we did is we sent out an email address, LCAP@srcs, and then our email address, so that you could, if there was more feedback you wanted to give specifically to the LCAP that that opportunity was provided.
Thank you. Okay, board member reports. Let's start with Dr. Kristoff.
Thank you. I have a few things. It's been a while since we have given board reports. My first is to, again, thank all those people who were involved in the renaming of the Piner Library. It was a very, very nice ceremony. I represented the board. Ed and Lori were there as well. It was a very nice celebration, and the history of education in Santa Rosa was on display there. It's just an amazing group of people over many years that have supported that school and still do. It's a very nice ceremony. I also visited Comstock Middle School a few weeks ago, had a very nice visit with Laura Hendrickson, and she's very enthusiastic about her staff, met with her staff as well. They are, it's a real nice community there. They really respect each other, and there seems to be a lot of helping each other out. The one concern that did come up was the spending of money on curriculum materials. I just felt they were in a position, in a position where they had to do it very quickly, but they were troopers. It was, again, a very nice visit, and I look forward to going back there. Last Friday night, we had a polenta feed, San Rosa High School Foundation. I want to thank Tony Negri, Art Horner, and the whole gang that's been putting this thing on for so many years. Again, this is, you look at the way the foundation distributes money at San Rosa High School, and it is across the board, so it's a very worthwhile annual event and, again, very successful. Again, Ola mentioned the SRTA awards, and again, I thank SRTA for all they do. It really, for me, is the epitome of, you know, all the stuff that goes on in education. As a board member, oftentimes, I'm not real close to the students, but just seeing their faces light up and the relationship between the teachers and students, and this presentation really confirms why I got involved in the profession. And it was a first-time event for nominating the Administrator of the Year, and that went to Brad Coscarelli, and that was a very nice award as well, and I look forward to seeing that continue in the future. And then, Lorraine was also, Martinez was also honored for her commitment and duty to Santa Rosa Teachers Association and Santa Rosa Students. So that was a very nice event again last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kristoff, Director Fong.
I would echo what Ron was saying about SRTA awards. They were very inspiring whenever we get to honor students and administrators and other teachers. It's always great. Thank you also to Art Quest and Jan Sophie, the director, and Brad for showing me around. What a great comprehensive program. I told Jan I finally got over there to take a look at it. I never went before. Now I went. So I have a show and tell today. I want to compliment our teachers for doing such amazing things in the classroom, the way we think education should be going in the 21st century. So here's a little show and tell. These are hot packs and cold packs that the kids in chemistry did a project learning thing, project-based learning thing, and it was kind of like Shark Tank without the money. We were the money people, or we had to do a rubric and ask them questions on their presentation. They had the chemistry, they had the introduction, they had the math, they had the, you know, how they put this together. They worked with industry partners, and they worked with our work-based learning coordinator who helped this, is all partly LCAP, partly county, and I forget what else. I'm sure W. Bettini can tell us. So we got to, you know, you pound on these, and then you make it, oh, they didn't break either. You pound on them, then they get hot and cold, and the kids were telling us all about the chemistry behind it, which I could not follow, and really, they did a great job. So we're talking about collaboration, we're talking about relevancy, real world, industry partners, mathematics and chemistry, and something that was engaging where they had to dress up also in front of us and present to industry partners and, you know, different people in the community. And so, I didn't invest any money, I didn't have any to invest, but kudos to teachers who are doing these real project-based learning, and really, this is where we're going, I think, with education in terms of making things relevant and why should kids be learning this? So they will always remember, they will always remember their hot and cold packs. Look at this one. Cute, huh, for kids? They may not remember their test, but they will remember their hot and cold packs in the presentation. So good job, teachers, administrators, who are doing these kinds of things out in classrooms.
Director Carl.
Thank you. You can pass one of the, the hot one down. Sitting in this chair for this whole meeting, if I can pull it off, I could use one of those. Hot.
They don't last more than 12 hours, okay? That was like two weeks ago.
So I had a chance last, this is sort of in line with the Rosenthal's who are now leaving, but that's all right, you guys can take off. I met last week with a group of about a dozen juniors, I guess they were freshmen and sophomore, most of them from Maria Creo, but they were actually from a couple of other sites as well, who needed to meet with a public official as part of their merit badge in local government. And I agreed to sit down with them and talk with them. An hour and a half later, I had much the same sort of response that any of us do when we get in front of students for a period of time. We have some really incredibly insightful students, even freshman and sophomore in high school. The only question that caused me to think a little bit was the one where they asked why our recesses aren't longer. But that was out of, my guess is probably 100 questions, that was the only one that I perceived to be, to not have a lot of base to it. I was challenged by these students to really be thinking a lot about what school governance is. They had some very clear and concise things to talk about with respect to their school, with respect to their education, with respect to budget and what happens at Sacramento. And frankly, it's those touch points that we get every once in a while that inspire us to keep working, and I'm sure inspire teachers on a daily basis to keep working. We have some amazing students here, and I got to meet 12 or 13 that I'm very proud of to say that they're students in our system. And next time, I better prepare a little better, because the basis of, or the questions were thought-provoking, and then I got a very nice card afterwards, but it was, it's the kind of thing that we want to remind ourselves, at least monthly, what wonderful students exist in this district.
Thank you. Frank.
Just want to report, I've visited a couple campuses. One was Maria Creo High School, met with some faculty, had good conversations.
Thank you. Director Anderson.
I got to enjoy the Art Quest showcase and was blown away by the beautiful performing arts and really blown away by the visual art exhibit. I tell you, it doesn't matter if you have a kid in that program or, you know, you have any kids in any schools, but to go and just enjoy that show when it comes around every year, because it's like going to a great art exhibit. I just really found a lot of the works beautiful and some of them very intense, so that was wonderful. I also went to the Santa Rosa City Schools instrumental music showcase at Wild Hall. Always lovely for our students to be able to enjoy that venue. And we heard lots of varied and wonderful music, and we even got to hear our own student board member, Ross Thorson, performing on the clarinet in the Piner Concert Band. That was fun. And I am somebody who believes that every student should have music in their lives, so to see our students from all five conferences of high schools performing in that venue was very cool. I visited Kid Street Charter School, and like everyone says, you'll be blown away when you visit there. And what really stood out to me was the standard of academic excellence that is expected of the kids, and I know that that will have impact on them in terms of results, but I also saw, I felt like there was a self-esteem that came from that that was very exciting. And finally, I just chaperoned prom last weekend. That's not part of my board duties, but I have to say that it happened to be in the Academy of Sciences, and I would encourage any schools that have that kind of opportunity to do it, because there were definitely, I got to be at one of the first big tanks when you go down into the aquarium, and there were so many students who had never been in the Academy of Sciences before, and for them to see those big tanks with a fish and get so excited about seeing it was really cool. So it was fun.
Thank you, Director Chaplin.
Actually, yesterday, I had the pleasure of visiting Bridget Mendzel's speech class at Maria Creo, and one of the students was actually Ari Rosenthal who was here, and he is just a shining example of the product that comes out of this class. All the students had these wonderful questions. We talked about government, political science, what I do in my day job, my role on the school board, and it was an hour long of just constant questions. I've never been to a class where so many hands shot up, every student asked at least three or four questions. Also, recently, I spent the morning at LC Allen High School. I met with Principal Stedlen, who gave me a wonderful tour. We visited the College and Career Center, some classroom visits, physics, honors chemistry, anatomy, physiology, AP literature. I participated in a student-led circle session, observed the English Language Development classes, and it was a break time, and I went out and spoke with a representative of the California Youth Outreach who's on campus from a city-sponsored Measure O grant, and these representatives are there on campus seeing the things that we don't always see. And he was sharing some stories in his role, and definitely a nice calm presence on campus. And while I'm talking about LC Allen, I want to give a shout out to the Lobos rugby team. This is a club team, and they are made up of athletes from other high schools in Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa School District. The Lobos are currently ranked 41 in the nation, and they were invited to the national championship in Kansas City. This is an invitation-only event, and they're trying to raise money, so they have a GoFundMe page, encouraging people to go check it out. This is a wonderful opportunity for these students, and I want to just say good luck on their fundraising goal, and hopefully, we'll be celebrating a victory sometime soon. The championship is May 18th through the 21st, and so, rock on, Lobos!
All right. Director Fong forgot one thing.
The teachers who did this project, I need to say their names. There are chemistry teachers at Montgomery High School, Tracy Maniscalco and Annette Thompson.
Thank you. Thomason. Which brings us back to Director Pew, the NSBA/CSBA report.
No report tonight.
No report tonight. Director Kristoff.
I'm not quite there yet, but I am a in-waiting CSBA delegate, and I have had contact, quite a bit of contact with CSBA, and I'll be meeting next month with them, and I've got a special committee that I have been asked to be a part of, which is very interesting because it's the heart of what I think I want to do with my time with CSBA, and that is about financing. And some of the information that I thought I would share with you is that there is a real inequality in funding for the districts throughout the state of California, and that's part of the main topic of the discussion. part of the, the main topic of the discussion. For example, the number one district gets $11,651 per student. The, the lowest gets $7,292. And of course, this has something to do with the way, you know, we structure the, the funding. Santa Rosa is at $8,998, the state average for secondary districts is $9,750. I've said before that it doesn't make sense to have arbitrary number of 55% to service our most needy students. Apparently, there are some real inequities among other districts that we'll be talking about. But for me, it's, I'd like to get as many quotes and as much, as many thoughts as I can from my community and from my fellow board members before I go to this meeting because I think it's, you know, number one, we're very inadequately funded in the state of California. And secondly, I want to make sure that, you know, we get up to the state average someplace. So anyway, I look forward to hearing from you and I'll be glad to represent you in Sacramento next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kristoff. Okay, moving on to the consent items.
Move item E2 through seven.
Second.
Moved by Director Carl, second by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We are moving right along today, aren't we? Brings us to F1. Action item approval of resolution 21617053, May 2017, observances and celebrations. And let me just say before you launch into this real quickly, I think it is really, this is a great idea that actually came from discussion that we had with Director Anderson, I think, on her first or second board meeting night, that we've moved resolutions to the front of the, of the agenda. Because if we're going to recognize something and make a resolution recognizing something, shouldn't we pay us some attention instead of giving it short shrift at 10 o'clock at night? With that, we present before you recognition for the classified school employees, the national teachers at the national level, from the national level, substitute teachers, school nurses and Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you. Any comments? All right, then I'll take a motion.
I'll move item F1.
Second.
Moved by Director Kristoff, second by Director Carl. Roll call vote.
Director Chris, Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. F2, the Advanced Learner Plan and Services. Dr. Guzman?
Good evening. I think the team is coming down to the table, so just give us a second here.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll move off. Yeah, I'll introduce and then I'm going to move off actually the table. So, good evening Superintendent Kitamora, President Close, members of the board. Tonight, you will have a presentation on the Advanced Learner Plan and Services. As you see seated around me, they'll introduce themselves, but this is an amazing team that's come together this year to really create what I believe to be a robust equitable plan that's been needed in Santa Rosa City Schools. So with that, I turn it over to the team.
Good evening. Am I on? So, let's go ahead and get started. Our, oh, before we get started, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves. I'm Lori Flanagan and I'm Coordinator for Curriculum and Instruction.
Steve Williams, teacher at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School.
Kim Walls, teacher at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School, 5th grade.
I'm Sally Luan, I'm a retired teacher and I've been part of the enhanced learning program and the GATE program at Santa Rosa for the last 30 years.
I'm Nora Patterson and I'm a teacher on special assignment at Lincoln Elementary.
I'm Rocio Michio and I'm a site-based teacher on special assignment at Monroe.
I don't think it's on. Turn it on.
There you go.
There we go. Anna Williams at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School.
Sure. Take two. Rocio Michio is my name and I'm a site-based teacher at Monroe School. I'm sorry, no, not a teacher, what kind of? Yes, I am a teacher. Site-based teacher on special assignment at Monroe.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing this year. We've worked for a couple of years now as a committee. There've been teachers, parents and administrators all working together to kind of create a vision for this new program. It used to be called the GATE program, Gifted and Talented, and now with our new vision, we've renamed it the ALPS or Advanced Learner Plan and Services. And this year, we've been meeting monthly to kind of write down this vision, get it on paper and have a presentable plan, which we've got to present to you tonight for your approval. And we're going to get going on telling you more about that.
So we feel this plan creates a sustainable system for professional development and revision such that the goal of access for all learners occurs in every classroom through differentiation with the goal of all students receiving advanced learner activities.
I wanted to speak a little bit to the equitable piece of that graphic. As you know, I work at Monroe, so this part was very important to me. We want to make sure that we are equitable for all of our students and that begins with our identification process. We want to pay attention to student groups that typically have not been identified, that's crucial, and we want to address the identification of underrepresented populations. In addition to that, we want to pay close attention to potential advanced learners that may be underachieving, not because of their ability, but because of any language
So I had to write this down, so I made sure I said it just right. So the vision that we present tonight is simple. We know that all students need to be challenged with rigorous creative learning opportunities. We also know that there is not just one size fits all for students. So it is our job as educators to make sure that every student, every day, is in an environment where there is always the next step to take. We know that every student succeed act requires us to advance equity by teaching high academic standards that will prepare all students to succeed in college and careers. The Advanced Learner Plan hopes to be an integral part of this mandate.
Our Advanced Learner Plan is comprised of eight components, which are recommended by the California Department of Education. And one main aspect of our program design is that advanced learners receive services during regular classroom time through specialized instruction focused on content, process, products and learning environments, which will build upon and extend the characteristics of advanced learners. The program will be suited to each individual's talents and abilities based on readiness, interest and learning style.
The identification process uses multiple measures to better enable teachers to identify and serve all students, including those that may be overlooked. Many potential advanced learners are underachievers and underrepresented due to being English language learners, foster youth, a migrant youth, or having low socioeconomic status, behavior problems or low class performance.
Teaching and learning is focused on meeting the needs of every student. This requires ongoing formative assessment, goal-setting and responsive teaching. We're, we are especially excited about the opportunity to integrate key elements of concept-based learning in our collaborative curriculum design with Connie Cam. Remaining mindful of increasing the depth and complexity in our new units is crucial.
I wanted to just sort of illustrate, we're, we're using a lot of big words, I think, which is important, but at the same time, just give a couple of examples to contextualize everything. So in my role as a TOSA, as a teacher on special assignment, I do see student groups all day long and I see students from intervention level all the way up to an advanced level. And I have to say that using these strategies over the last few years has been great for all of my students, identified or not. It's really impacted my teaching as a whole. It's really exposed kids of all levels to more rigorous, complex, deep thinking, which I think has been very valuable. I'm going to give just a couple of examples briefly. With a 6th grade class, we read an Amy Tan story and it was a short story, they loved it, they were engaged, but we specifically looked at ethics and change over time. So I didn't know how it would go, I was just trying it out and it was amazing to see what these students could do if you, you gave them the opportunity. Today, in my 2nd grade reading group, we, you know, I don't want to say simpler, but we read a picture book, Voices in the Park, and we talked about multiple perspectives and imagery and I was blown away at what these 2nd graders could do. For these, for all of our children, really, each child has their entry point and a high ceiling as a result of this lesson design. Yeah, me too. Okay, my cards, don't want to skip anything. Okay, a big piece of our plan is social and emotional development. The plan recognizes that the advanced, that advanced learners may experience social and emotional challenges related to their unique needs. The plan outlines providing parent education opportunities to develop awareness of advanced learners' social and emotional needs.
So you may be wondering how this would all come about and it's ongoing professional development is the cornerstone of good teaching. Perhaps this has never been more true than in today's world because teachers are being asked to think differently and teach differently compared to how most of us were trained. Both the Common Core state standards and the Next Generation Science Standards require that teachers develop conceptual understandings in their curriculum. Translating that to common language means this. Instead of teaching about governments or plant development separately, I teach students about structure, systems and change. Instead of teaching isolated facts, students construct understandings about these big ideas that hopefully will endure long past the grade that they are in. For teachers to switch to this new paradigm of thinking takes a commitment of time on everyone's part, the district, the teachers and the students. Nothing could be more important than making sure that all students are exposed to this three-dimensional curriculum. This is the main goal of the ALPS professional development.
The ALPS program is successful largely in part to parent and community involvement as well as teacher and student involvement in the program. And we're talking about coaches and extracurricular activity, members of the community who meet our students and get to know them. And so the program is encouraging all of these individuals to participate. And there are three ways for parents and community members to participate in the program. First of all, parents and teachers and community members are asked to fill out referral forms for students who are in 3rd through 12th grade. Second, the ALPS Advisory Committee Council, ALPS Advisory Council will include parents and community members and they will meet regularly. And then the district will hold at least two ALPS informational nights per year and will invite community and parents to attend. And at those meetings, identification process, philosophy, social, emotional resources and curriculum will be introduced and then parents and community members will be encouraged to provide feedback to the ALPS services at that, at those meetings.
Can I add something about identification? So the identification process is so that we know who we have in our classrooms. It's not so that these children get something that these children don't. But just like you'd want to know if you had a diabetic in your classroom, you want to know who you have in front of you so you can make sure that you're serving them. I think that's an important distinction. Another component of the program, of course, would include a program assessment. This would include people like site leads, the district ALPS TOSA and the ALPS Advisory Council. So those groups of people would all participate in the assessment of the program, which would include looking at student data and community surveys in order to gather information about how the program is working and then evaluate and look for ways to improve the program. And then, of course, presenting the evaluation and suggestions to the board.
So as you know, this is an action item, so it will be going back to the board and if it is approved tonight, it will be coming back to you and you'll see it in our elementary LCAP as we're starting here with the ALPS program in our elementary district. And so we would be budgeting for these points above for the identification process, obviously the professional development, any type of student support and the prospective point six, a percentage of an ALPS TOSA. So that would be, you would be seeing that at the end of May and also for the two June meetings in the elementary LCAP. And with that, I turn it back over to the board.
Thank you. Before we go to the board, I have a blue card, Chris Bertridell.
First, thank you, hello. Thank you for all the work your committee did. First, I would like to recognize that. I am a counselor, my name is Chris Bertridell, a counselor in Santa Rosa City Schools, 23 years. I've been at middle school, high school, alt ed school. I've been the GATE coordinator for four years at Santa Rosa Middle School. I'm thrilled that new ideas and new thoughts are being discussed, but I'm concerned when I was reading through the items online that I didn't get, it felt like an elementary-focused, an elementary-type of program, but my understanding is it's K through 12? Is that true?
So we're starting out in the elementary district first.
Okay, that, that would be good information to have. So then this is specifically for elementary, okay, great.
Correct.
And when will secondary be added?
Well, I, I think it kind of goes back to the assessment piece. After we complete this first year, we'll be able to see about building blocks and bring other stakeholders in to continue the growth to the secondary district.
Okay, thank you. One aspect of this, I appreciate the board and especially Diane Kitamora's support at the same time as the increase of mental health needs in our communities, that there is a counseling component in this, in this model. I would like to ask the advisory committee to include an elementary counselor in their committee so that they can better understand what services can be included and so it can be best utilized. And nobody has an understanding of an elementary school counselor except for an elementary school counselor. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the board for questions or comments. Director Kristoff, Director Anderson, Director Fong? Director Anderson?
Thank you. Thank you for putting this on the agenda Superintendent Kitamora and President Close. It's It's no secret that this is a topic that's really near and dear to my heart. Nothing would make me happier than to have the differentiated instruction that we experienced, that my children experienced at Shacks, be available to every child in this district. And in particular, I've always felt concerned about the kids who may not have walls of books or a chemistry set, or their parents don't take them out to museums or the exploratorium on weekends. Those are the kids for whom getting this kind of instruction in the classroom is really critical. It's important to keep them in school, so it affects our long-term dropout rates and engagement, and certainly performance. And I also worry about our students being among the statistics nationally that gifted students or high-level learners have a high propensity for high-risk behavior and depression and suicide, and, you know, not having services for those kids means that we might be adding to those statistics, and that bothers me. I also think it could have a positive impact on enrollment, because one of the reasons that Shacks has a long waiting list is because parents want their kid to have the opportunity to do the best that they can and not to have big barriers in their way. And if they are able to go up the ladder from wherever they are, that's what parents want. Let's think, what else I wanted to say about this? Well, I guess just in general, what I like about this program is that it's for all students in every elementary school, eventually. But without this program, our gifted students can't thrive, and we want every student to be able to learn in our schools. That's why we provide education, and they should be able to realize their potential. So I want to thank the committee. I know it's been a long, long, hard road, and so I really appreciate your bringing this today. But I do have some questions. Rosia, thank you for providing some examples. And Nora, I know you're at Lincoln, right? So I wonder if you have some examples of how this has worked for you in a mixed classroom, maybe not, maybe especially with the kids who aren't identified gifted? And, yeah, let's start with that.
Okay, well, my role currently is primarily intervention, literacy intervention, so I haven't brought in as much in my groups as Rosio has, for example. But one of the things that we learned in our class with Hannah Williams is about bringing in a lens of these key concepts and having children being given kind of like a framework and a structure that is broader than just the main topic or idea. So you're looking at it in a more universal theme, or also in a way that you can compare ideas that might not be exactly the same and put them into a structure that makes sense to them.
Are you finding that it's more work for you?
I think that it's a process, trying to, yes, I think it takes time, and it helped that we had a cohort together and we could work on creating some of these ideas that we can share them with our students.
Great. And I know when I've heard of other districts implementing programs like this, that they do it as sort of the comprehensive curriculum, is that what we, for the whole district, is that going to happen for us, or when would it happen, or what would be the triggers?
So that was really referenced around the CCD work that we're doing with the collaborative curriculum design, and really being able to infuse that throughout that work.
Okay. And do you have a sense of where you'd start, or how you're going to start implementing this?
Well, I think some of it is starting to be implemented, as they're just now rolling out the second unit, but I think what I found with the teachers who are developing these units is they're work in progress, right? So as this becomes part of who we are, it'll be a natural addition and complement to those units, and I think that's part of the next steps.
Can I add one thing to that there? As a teacher on special assignment, sort of how, what we have done so far is, over the past two years, and I want to just back up to the group that's worked together, it's really been amazing, we've had a great time, and everyone's been very supportive. So we get to have these wonderful, this wonderful time together and then go experiment in our own classrooms, and it's been just so fruitful. But in my role as a teacher on special assignment, I've been able to push into classrooms and do demo lessons, and so that sort of, you know, encourages teachers to try new things and in a safe place, and we're sort of going through it together. And I think that that is initially, that will be the foundation, and it's going to be cultivated, and it's going to be cultivated by your colleagues and your peers, and I think that's going to be very effective and exciting. It is, it's invigorating to me personally, to all of us, so I think that energy will sort of be pervasive, be good.
Thank you.
One other thing along those lines is if we do have people like the people on this committee, what we're doing is we're building capacity within ourselves, so we're starting with people within our organization already who have the capacity, and then we're building out with that. And so I think that's powerful work. We already have people who are experts, and we're starting with them, and we're utilizing what we have.
Actually, if I can tag on to my... Yeah, I think we're really lucky, because I know there are consultants out there making a lot of money bringing this program that you're talking about to districts, so we're very lucky to have what we have in-house.
Can I add one more thing? So I'd just add, too, that I think that one of the things that we're talking about is really having a structure for the teachers that would like to engage in this kind of professional development. And last year, we had this little class, and we had this little cohort, and then all of these wonderful people went out and did that at their schools. And I think we just want to really build on that model, and that it will spread out and spread out, and then those teachers become the trainers, and, you know, everyone's doing it at $43 an hour or whatever. It's all very reasonable and manageable, and the people that want to be involved step up to the plate, and then they bring in the people that maybe need a little more nudging. So it builds on itself.
Director Phong. Director Kristoff.
Hi. Thank you guys very much for your report. I know how much work you've put in on this, and, you know, the transition from the gate and all that has not been easy. And the things that are going on in the state and the nation don't make it any easier either, but I am a real believer in curriculum, as I've stated many times, and I think the power to shift education and the paradigm under which we operate really lies within curriculum and building a powerful curriculum and building more tools to deliver curriculum, and I would say that you're adding tools to the toolbox, and that's much appreciated. I do have some questions, however. The presentation, you know, and I asked, thank you, Chris, for clarifying, it is, we're starting with elementary school, okay? Now, are all teachers going to be trained to do this, or is this voluntary?
Maybe a little bit of both. I think that we're just, I mean, depending on what happens here tonight, you know, this really is the process of starting what that's going to look like. So I think when we come back in the fall, we can have more specifics for you of how that will be rolled out.
So it might be some teachers, might be some schools, or...
I mean, I think specifically, too, with the teacher on special assignment, being able to go into classes and really be sort of a partner and model lessons together, where they're initially asked for that, I think will be a very good place to start.
Okay. And then, I like the idea, actually, this has been discussed with other board members, of an individual app. You know, you start out as a preschooler, or actually, you know, you just get out of the hospital, you get your app, and this is what you're going to learn. Mom and dad, you've sat down and talked about this, and your teachers talk about it, and your counselors talk about it, so you're always, you know, you've got your own learning plan. Everybody has their own individual plan. I like the idea of exciting kids, people have different interests and that kind of stuff. But as a teacher, I mean, differentiating curriculum with 35 people in a class at the secondary level sounds a little bit challenging, especially when you don't have any extra resources, you know, that part could be a little bit tough. But be that as it may, I think it's a great ideal to try and connect with kids and find out what sparks them, and try and get specific in terms of what their learning needs are. In the presentation and the materials I read on this, just a little bit confused. It talks about all students in some, a couple of breaths, and then it talks about the 97% percentile in another breath. So are we looking to test or to assess the top 3%, or are we, is this something we're aiming at the entire cross-section of students? I'm not sure where we're going with this at this time, so...
Well, I think what our goal is, and I use this little metaphor that it's the vitamin D in the milk, that what we want to make sure is that in every classroom, we are providing the structure for all students to be challenged. And so the students that are at that very advanced level are going to have a structure that allows them to go into depth and acceleration in the disciplines that they're ready to do that in. So for example, in my history class right now, I've got 32 students, and so for some of my students that are at that level of research, they're able to take an independent study project and do research and develop a presentation that's very, very advanced. And the person sitting next to that student might be at a reading level of grade three. And so that student is going to take an independent study project just as well, and also be studying something in history that interests them in the grade-level curriculum. But their product might be something that challenges them to the same extent, but isn't going to be of the same depth and complexity. I kind of liken it to, you know, going to the gym. Everybody can go to the gym, some people are going to be lifting weights like this, and some people are going to be lifting weights that are much smaller. Everyone's getting a good workout. So the plan is that we want to make sure that those kids that must have that next step in order to be growing and learning something new every day are getting it, but that all students are being engaged in a program that is designed to meet them at their readiness level, their interest level, and their learning styles. Does that answer it?
Not exactly, but I, what, let me maybe phrase it a little differently. Are we going to assess for, are we going to test it for the top 3%? Is that what we're looking for?
Well, so the idea is that we want to make sure that we're identifying students so that, like I said, that we know who is there in the classroom. Because frequently, like right now, I have students in my classroom that I don't see how it is that they didn't get identified as gifted. They're really gifted, but they don't turn in their homework, or they don't dot their i's and cross their t's, or they don't put their name on their paper. And as the counselor up there mentioned, you know, they're going to get into middle school, and the teacher's going to have 165 kids, and not really going to know that this student actually reads at the 12.9 level, or actually has tested into college math, because they don't maybe have time to read their cubes. So that's why we need to identify.
Yeah, I was just going to contrast your other point, Ron, about 35 individual plans. I would agree with you totally, but the way the program's set up is to differentiate for small groups of things. So like in my class, frequently, I'm just differentiating for analytical, creative, and practical thinkers. And with those three groups, I'm giving them huge amounts of choice with the same kind of piece, but I'm giving basically an individual plan, but there's only really three things I'm doing. Or with my math curriculum, again, I'm only having three levels. But again, we have all these different ways of attacking the problems, of being able to express the meanings to the problems, of being able to talk about the problems that, even among my best math students, the ability to communicate mathematics to their peers and to others really varies. And so being, having them have opportunities where they get to do these very high-level things, like talking about mathematics and how it applies, and how you express it so somebody else would understand what you're saying, is really a whole level of differentiation that really doesn't take that much work on the teacher's part.
Okay. So when you assess, you're talking about the kids that may not read, may not do their homework, but are very bright, you have to do some kind of an assessment to determine that. And I know you guys have been doing this with Gate for a long time, so can you just, I'm sorry to belabor this and take so much time...
Do you want, what that's how?
But, yeah, but if you could just tell me how you, how do you identify these people? How many do we have in our system approximately?
So, that 97 percentile is previously what we, previously what we use for identification for Gate at the, for the state. So we've been consistently picking those kids up, and I found that using achievement tests was not picking up kids that are English language learners, underrepresented, and the underachievers. And so we went through a Raven test, which is a non-verbal test, and blanket tested all the third graders. And once we did that one year, we discovered that children who did not perform in, were not performing in class, who were English language learners, not doing their homework, teachers had no idea that they had the potential and they had something going on. When they saw the scores on this non-verbal test, then they recognized, oh, just because the child doesn't express themselves in class, doesn't speak English well, or is a foster child who doesn't have enough nourishment, their, the brain is there, and the potential is there, and the thought process is there. And so we used it first to try to identify for Gate, underrepresented. What I see for it now is so that teachers can help see that there is potential out there that they do not normally see on an achievement test. And so we won't, the 97 percentile, I think, is going to disappear, and the teachers will just get information on how, on the high test scores of those kinds of kids.
Thank you guys very much. I took too much of everybody's time, I appreciate it.
It's important. Director Phong.
So I have a few things to add, but I just wanted to continue that line of thinking. So can you tell us a little bit more about the test and the kinds of giftedness we're talking about? What are you looking for?
So I'm just going to say that what we have created, Sally and I, kind of in a, wherever she is again, sort of in a back room, tried to figure out, okay, so what can we say that is like the, the structure that we want to start with? And this is not something that's written in stone. This is where we want to begin, and we want to be able to take these ideas. This year, we've been going around to all the schools and talking to all of the teachers and administrators about identification. And what our hope is that we get all the data that we need to this year to see who we have identified, and that then next year, we can say, all right, so we still think that we have not created an identification system that is fully bringing in all of the students that we actually think that we have in the schools, which is where we are right now. And so then we want to look to see, what can we do to help more teachers understand what giftedness might look like? Because it looks so very different than a lot of people's stereotypical idea of it is. So I think that we need to say, this is where we are now, and we're trying to decide as we move along, especially if we get to move forward, that we would be in process for working out exactly the structure that we think would be good. And then maybe that would be what we would use for the next few years, and then we'd say, well, now we need to modify it, because now it looks like we want to bring in this group. So the identification process should ideally have like seven or eight things that you're looking for that can help teachers, parents, students see that ability in themselves. And as I said, it's not to keep anybody out, it's just to make sure that we know who we've got in front of us. So I hope that helps.
It does. I really appreciate that you have thought about the underrepresented groups, that you want to use a non-verbal or non-writing, reading tool. So I really appreciate that. What I've noticed is that you're all very excited, and that it's a teacher-led program, and that counts for everything, because your excitement and your passion for this is going to be carrying over to your colleagues, so they're going to want some of what you're having, that kind of thing, right? So thank you about that. You know, I'm familiar with high school and secondary and not so much elementary, although I'm in voluntary kindergarten now, I'm learning a lot. although I'm in voluntary kindergarten now, I'm learning a lot. So, as our counselor, Chris Birch, was saying about the kids coming up, if they're not challenged, and there's a ceiling, there's a ceiling for learning when they're young, and by the time we get them in seventh grade, they're already just kind of turned off, and they just think things are the same, and it's the same old, same old. Then we have genius things that are happening in classrooms, like that hot-cold pack thing where there's like no ceiling, right? And there's an extension for learning, and they can just soar, they can do whatever, you know, a lot more. And teachers who are learning how to do that, allowing that to happen. And creating those opportunities is, I think, where you're going. I think this is where you're going, in terms of the Connie Cam stuff, in terms of like collaborating and working on units together. In every single thing you teach, there is, you know, we've all been studying an educator, famous one, very rich now, Rick DeForre. And he talks about, you know, what are they supposed to learn, and what happens when they don't learn it? And so, finally, the question really is, what happens when they already know it and when they have learned it? And that's what we need to go to next. I think that's what you're going to be working on, right? So, kudos, thank you, looking forward to the work.
Can I add anything?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to add, my mind keeps going back to, it's not more work. I just want to be very clear. It's not more work, it's different work. Yeah. And I'm making, as we're, I'm hearing all of our conversation tonight, it's reminding me of the Make the Way project that we just completed with an awesome public lesson to representatives from all over the state of California. You can tell I'm proud. But it is just more rigorous, more engaging. It really enhances student, pushing students to use more critical thinking. So, it's not more work, it's just, we're tweaking our lesson designs, it's just different work.
Thank you for saying that. And also, thank you for making it so inclusive, because really, if our district is going to be moving toward excellence, continually moving toward excellence as we are, we have to do this kind of stuff for all kids, all kids. So, even when we had, was it Ari Rosenfeld, or no, the textbook, he was talking about the textbook? Okay. Why are we using a textbook? Why don't we use lots and lots of primary sources, current sources, and all that stuff in this 21st century, right? So, okay.
Director Sheffield.
So, I want to thank all of you for the report. This was wonderful, and you answered every question that I had around identifying student populations who have been historically underserved. I have one more continuation on that, is the parent and community involvement for the student populations that have been historically underserved. And looking at the slide that had referrals and advisory councils and information nights, I'm wondering if these are bilingual, especially around an information night, or multilingual?
Well, they'll have to be, of course, because we want to make sure that we reach all of our families.
Absolutely. So, that was my concern, is if we're reaching the students, are we reaching the families and the communities as well?
For sure.
Okay, well, I want to thank you for all this work you've done. It looks like you've done a real robust look at this about what we need to do and how we need to do it. And we received a lot of comments from parents and community members who are really supportive of your work. I can tell you that this really resonates with me personally, and I want to say that because I want to give a shout out to my teachers at Brook Hill Elementary when I was a kid, because I went to K3 in another city, and I was in a traditional gifted program, where I was brought out of the classroom every day. And for a kid who was really socially awkward and really small, it was, it made things really hard for me academically, emotionally, socially, behaviorally. And then I went to Brook Hill, and Mrs. Easterday, who still teaches first go, and Mr. Caddell and Mr. Follett were my teachers four through six, and they basically did this, and they were the three most important teachers in my life, K-12, college, graduate school, because they basically followed this. Every kid in their class was met, you know, where they were and engaged in the way they needed to be, and it was life-changing. So, I really appreciate this, and I'm excited to see it implemented in our district for all kids.
So, President Close, Mrs. Easterday is still doing her job, because she helps Brent Jackson lead Project Lead the Way, teaching explicitly in this manner, helping teachers to teach in this manner. So, she continues the work.
She was pretty great. Okay, so, this is an action item. I move we adopt the Advanced Learner Program and Services.
Second.
Moved by Director Anderson, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, F3, discussion item, the College Readiness Block Grant.
Just organizing here. Good evening again, President Close, Superintendent Kitomora, members of the board. Tonight, Director Bettini will be giving an update on the College Readiness Block Grant. I turn it over to Director Bettini.
Thank you. Good evening, President Close, Superintendent Kitomora, excuse me, members of the board. Tonight, I will be sharing with you information related to the College Readiness Block Grant. The College Readiness Block Grant is one-time state grant funding established for the purposes of providing high school students, particularly unduplicated, which, again, unduplicated students are defined as our English learners, foster youth, and students eligible for free or reduced-price meal. Additional support to increase the number of students enrolling at institutions of higher learning and completing an undergraduate degree within four years. The amount of grant funding awarded to each district was based on the number of unduplicated students enrolled in grades nine through 12 during the 2015-16 fiscal year. And as you can see on the screen, Santa Rosa City Schools received just under $500,000 for this grant. In order to receive the grant funds, the district needed to submit a report to the California Department of Education by January 1, 2017, outlining how the district will measure the impact of the grant fundings received. And in the board packet, there was a copy of the required report we submitted to the state. We also needed to develop a plan describing how the funds will increase or improve services for unduplicated students to ensure college readiness, and describe how the plan aligns with our Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP. A detailed local plan does not need to be submitted to the California Department of Education. However, per grant requirements, this plan is being shared with the Board of Education as a discussion item tonight, and will be brought back at a subsequent meeting for approval as a consent item. Before I dive into our plan, I wanted to share with the board that the initial focus areas outlined tonight were developed after first reviewing the suggestions provided by the California Department of Education, excuse me, on how to use funding. So, these were actually included, these suggested activities were included on the board cover sheet of the report. In addition to reviewing what the CDE recommended, we also solicited feedback on various aspects of this initial plan from college and career counselors, high school vice principals, high school school principals, and school counselors. And this plan was also shared with the district's College and Career Center implementation team, which, again, that team consists of our college and career counselors, work-based learning coordinators, community and post-secondary partners. Please note that additional discussions will be occurring with the appropriate stakeholders to implement the specific aspects of the plan I'll be sharing with the board tonight. One of our focus areas in our plan is increasing counseling services to students and families on college admission requirements and financial aid. This aligns to the CDE-recommended use of funds, item number two, listed on the board report cover page. On the slide, you can see it indicates the funding amount that will be allocated to support this focus area over the course of the grant term. In regards to financial aid, as you heard at our last meeting, the support we provided through the 10,000 Degrees Financial Aid Campaign had quite the positive impact. District-wide, we had an increase in financial aid application completion for the California Dream Act and for the FASFA, which, again, the free application for federal student aid by 19%, and then the FASFA loan by 9%. So, we do want to continue to provide additional support to students and families accessing financial aid to increase access to college. And as you also heard at the board meeting, 10,000 Degrees doesn't have the capacity, though, to support this district-wide financial aid campaign next year in all schools. So, we've been discussing with 10,000 Degrees a scaled-back model of support that could include a Train the Trainer model and/or a part-time fellow, which is a dedicated 10,000 Degrees staff member assigned to specific school sites to support students and families. This kind of scaled-back support model was shared at our last College and Career Center Support Team Extended Team Meeting this month on April 5, which included college and career counselors, vice principals, work-based learning coordinators, and a school counselor represented. The recommendation from this team was to use grant funds to support the Train the Trainer model, really to help build our own capacity sustainability within our school district. So, seeking support from 10,000 Degrees to come in and really show us, you know, how to support our students and families with this process. It was also discussed to look at providing supplemental support, such as a 10,000 Degrees fellow assigned specifically to Ridgeway High School. Again, as we discussed last time, SSU and the SRJC has expressed interest in partnering with us to support our students and families with financial aid, FASFA and California Dream Act completion next year. We are currently in the process of identifying a date inmate and bring our team and our partners together to discuss and develop the details of the plan further. In addition to the financial aid support to increase access to college, this funding could be utilized to provide students and families with additional support related to college admission requirements. What this support would look like would be based on district and site-specific needs. Recently, school counselors in our districts have been working in subcommittees to discuss and identify areas of need related to counseling services. This grant funding could support activities identified by those, identified by those subcommittees for grades nine through 12 specifically. So, for example, one of the items that came up out of the subcommittee work that our school counselors are working very hard on was the possibility of hiring a COSA, so a counselor on special assignment, which could provide additional support to our counseling departments and school sites, that, again, really could support this work. So, next steps for this focus area would be really compiling, compiling the initial feedback we've already received, the additional information that we'll receive from our meeting in May discussing the financial aid campaign, the feedback that we are receiving from the counseling subcommittees, to ultimately solicit additional feedback from our stakeholders to finalize specific action steps and expenditures in this area. Another focus area is providing technology to enhance A through G completion rates and academic planning. This aligns to the CDE-recommended use of funds, item number four. And item number seven, listed on your report cover page. Funding would be allocated to support implementation of technology tools that support the counseling department. This could include dedicated Chrome parts or software for, or software, excuse me, for the counseling department to use when working with students and families, doing class presentations related to A to G entrance requirements for college, course planning, I mean, the options are limitless. One of the tools we've actually started exploring is implementation of EDocs. An EDocs is an add-on feature in Naviance, which we're using in grades nine through, or, excuse me, seven through 12, which allows high schools to prepare and send college application documentation electronically, so transcripts, letters of recommendation to all common app destination. We recently surveyed all school counselors regarding implementation of EDocs, and based on the survey results, we are going to wait and explore piloting EDocs during the 2018-2019 school year. Sites really expressed that they wanted to focus on implementing illuminate first, and then look at adding additional software later on. So, we'll resume that discussion in the fall of this upcoming school year, early spring. The next focus area is related to AP and IB exams, which provides students the opportunity to earn credit and accelerate a placement in college. This focus area lies, aligns to the CDE-recommended use of funds, item number six. Due to the elimination of the federal AP test fee program, the CDE will not be continuing their AP and IB test fee reimbursement program. With this program, it is actually provided support for income-eligible students to take the IB and AP exam at a reduced cost. Prior to the school year, our district would pay the difference in the cost of exams for income-eligible students and receive a reimbursement from the state for a portion of this cost. Since the state subsidy is no longer available, we are using grant funds to cover those associated costs to provide income-eligible students access to these exams. Provided the grant is focused on increasing the number of students that enroll at institutions of higher education and complete an undergraduate degree within four years, we really need to collect data regarding how our students are doing after they leave our district. So, we're looking at utilizing grant funding to purchase Naviance Alumni Tracker, which, again, is another add-on feature, which would enable us to pull data from the National Student Clearinghouse and generate reports on student post-secondary outcomes. Funding would be allocated to, in this area, to also initially train our administrators and counselors on how to access the reports, because it's great to have the data, but we really need to understand how we can access it and learn from it as well. So, not only will this support collecting data for the grant, but I know in previous board meetings, there has been requests by board members to really know how our kids are doing once they leave us. And so, I think that this is a really nice way to access that data and really help us make evidence-based informed decisions. So, the slide here shows a summary of the anticipated budgeted costs associated with the focus areas outlined in our initial plan for the College Readiness Block Grant, Block Grants, Grant, excuse me, my goodness, tonight. Again, tonight, this is being brought forward as a discussion item, and we will continue to work collaboratively with our sites to further flush this out and meet the goals of the grant. And finally, as mentioned previously, a condition for receiving funding, we needed to describe how this plan aligns to our Local Control Accountability Plan, and there's clear alignment. And specifically in goal number one, where we're looking at preparing students to be ready for college and career, so we're right on track with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a blue card, Chris Riddell. Birch Riddell, excuse me.
It's okay. Hello, Chris Birch Riddell, Santa Rosa High School. First of all, I'd really like to thank the board and our district office for supporting this, creating this block grant. The college career centers at the comprehensive high schools have been an amazing asset, and this year, right now, in the spring of our second year, the culture on our campus has completely changed, where today, a teacher was saying that they had walked by another student sitting out in the courtyard over by the tech area, and was talking about a field trip that was going on, and how to go through to get the field trip, that they're going to go over to, you know, Lydell Beauty College, and how to do that. And another student was coaching another student about how to go to the College and Career Center to be able to access what other, you know, what they can learn there, what they can gain there, which is, again, it tells us that it's a cultural thing. It's not, at this point, we've created this amazing thing on our campus with an amazing College and Career Center counselor that has now become a huge part of our campus. And from what I hear from the other campuses, it's the truth as well. I know at the last board meeting, one College Career Center counselor spoke about his program in particular, and I'd really love for the other College Career Centers to be able to share the specialties going on on their campus, because it's super exciting. I was at Santa Rosa High School when we used to have a College and Career Center, and so I've, I missed it horribly when it was gone, and I'm just thrilled that it's back and it's better than ever. I also want to really extend my hand, Steve Mazzara. I am one of the subcommittee's leads, and one of, during our time, we created a really wonderful plan. We've shared it with Steve, he's been supportive throughout the whole process, and at this point, he shared it with Debbie, and now it's a part of this whole process, which, to me, it's amazing. And I'm thrilled that Steve has been so open to working with the counselors, getting our information, really seeing how much information we have, and how much experience we have, and how we can really enlighten this. And since this is the second thing that a counselor has actually, you know, that's involving counseling directly, it's really wonderful to see that counselors are being recognized for the needs on our campuses, for what we can bring to students, what we can bring to staff, what we can bring to their families. And we want to include ourselves, continue to be included into the conversations where we have been forgotten in the past, and we are thrilled that we are being thought of now, and being used, and being given more opportunities, and more staffing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Director Pugh?
Thank you. This is a great reform.
This is a great report, lots of great background material, and I will fully support it when the opportunity comes that I can do that. I do have a couple of questions, and so I need a little bit of help. We talked in the cover page, A to G rates. I don't think you've ever received any documentation on that. If you could find some before the next board meeting, and that would be really helpful. I'd also would like to see, what is the goal? Hundred percent? I don't know, but I would like to find out what that would be. And then also, on the main page, number one, it says here, "Increase college readiness, improve A to G rates," that's the question I had there, "and increase the honors and advanced placement courses." So are we looking to add courses or not? Because I didn't see it in the other slides.
Thank you for your question about A through G completion. I, too, was curious as well, and so today, actually, I pulled a report using e-Schools. It's the College Prep On Track Report in e-Schools for last school year, and our A through G completion rate, according to this report, is at 33% right now in our district. And again, in order to earn A through G credit, you know, you don't only take the course, but you have to pass it with a C or better. So that's what that report states right now. In regards to honors classes?
Not more courses, per se, yet, but more students enrolled in the courses we have now. And I'm not sure about which report. There's multiple reports in e-Schools, and so I want to be sure, and Steve's my expert up there, that we provide you the most accurate information, and so we will do that, because I think we need to take a look at that specific data in a full board meeting, so we can break it down and have a discussion.
Well, I am heartened with the fact that there's such a substantial amount of investment in counseling services, and that's going to be a key here, I think, in improving those rates.
Yep.
So thank you for a good report.
Director Fong, and then Director Carl.
Thank you, Debbie and Anna. This is so exciting. Although that much money is still a drop in the bucket, I know, over three years, really, it's really not that much, but yes, we need it. So just a question about the counseling line, where you have $300,000 for the three years of this grant. The college and career counselors that are currently in place are still funding other portions of the LCAT, right? This is additional. So, for example, you were talking about a COSA, Counselor on Special Assignment, and I really support that, because when Chris was talking about, the counselor was talking about culture, truly, that's what we're talking about, changing culture for kids. And so as you're presenting this, I'm thinking, 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 thinking harder and harder. And Frank was mentioning, you know, number one, increase honors and advanced placement courses or enrollment in AP and underrepresented, unduplicated kids taking more AP courses. So I'm wondering if we're thinking at all about how there are other ways besides AP to get to college or to be college-ready, and certainly the barrier of whether kids think they belong or not, or whether kids think they can afford the fee or not in paying for that fee, and whether they are challenged in school when they're bored to death, and we're talking about the Alps, you know, all of that works together. But I'm also wondering, and this is actually way beyond the scope of this, but just let's think about, how do we get kids to college courses also? And it may not be AP. Just another thing to think about outside the scope of this grant, I think, which I'd like to have more discussion about, Diane.
I think it could be wrapped right into an A through G discussion.
A through G discussion, grad requirement discussion, or credits and all that, and GPAs, and what's important to kids and families in preparation.
And the institutionalized systems of the colleges that demand certain things, that drive our system, that isn't necessarily for everybody. So I think those are all very valid discussions that we should have.
Thank you.
Director Carl.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. I, too, like Director Pugh, am interested in what those numbers are. I appreciate an initial number, but we're obviously interested in it from a disaggregated basis as well and a historical basis. I'd like to understand any trends, and then what staff believes has affected those trends. So is there anything that we've done in the past that has not worked, or the things that have worked, so that we can put this all together in terms of what the long-term plan is? Realistically, we've got money for three years, and then it ends. For instance, you know, the Alumni Tracker, it's 5,000 a year, so I assume what we have to do is pay it each year for 5,000, and the fourth year, we're going to have to find the money somewhere else if we want that data. So I think we've got to account for whether that data helps us. I've been one who's been asking for a number of years, as has Frank, about getting that kind of data, because I think there are a lot of value that can be derived from that. But whenever we look at grants, you also look at, the money runs out, and so what are we doing? How are we institutionalizing? And I think in part, understanding historically where it is, what the trends are, and what moves those trends is going to be important. On the trudsey one, you already have an answer to that, which is that if we do the right things, we're going to increase ADA, we're going to have the money to be able to continue to do those things. This one, it's not so clear to me, so understanding that will be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely look forward to the opportunity to look at numbers in a detailed way. I know that I ran a report on Data Quest and got different numbers, so if we can figure out what the right numbers are, that would be great. I really applaud your work here, and I think it is changing the culture at the high schools and already seen a difference. I hear a lot of great reports from different people about kids who are really being motivated and helped in their decision-making process. This all sounds really good, and I look forward to hearing more.
So while Greg is getting that ready, I'll go ahead and start us off. Good evening, President Close, Superintendent Kitchmore, and Board of Education. Sarah Crank here from State and Federal Programs again, and one of the pieces that I have the honor of overseeing is our migrant education program. Historically, the district service grant has simply been a consent item, but with transparency now, we would love for you to see what this program offers our students at Santa Rosa City Schools. And Greg Hauser is our teacher on special assignment. He is truly the heart and soul of our migrant ed program, and so he will be showing you tonight the program we have here with migrant education.
Good evening. Is this on? There we are. I am really excited to be here to talk about migrant education, my work that's happened over the course of this year and that will continue to happen over the course of next year. So I am the teacher on special assignment for migrant education for Santa Rosa City So how do you qualify for migrant education? Migrant education is a federally funded program, and it goes through something that called the district service agreement. This document goes through a lot of different processes. It goes to the migrant education parent group. It goes to our regional office. It comes to you all, and then it finally goes to the state, and then after the state approves it, we get our funding for the following school year. Migrant education came into being because of a documentary that happened in 1960 called Harvest of Shame that talked about some particularly deplorable conditions of migrant families. So around six years later, in 1966, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act started funding for this program. So a student would qualify for migrant education if, first of all, they have to be under the age of 22. One or both of their parents would work in agriculture, which would include grapes, dairy cows, or fishing. And also, they would qualify if they have a qualifying move every three years, meaning that they're moving because they're seeking work in agriculture. In our district, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, we have 483 students dispersed throughout the schools. So I am the teacher on special assignment, like I mentioned, and I'm a liaison between our district and Santa Rosa City Schools. This is of a particular benefit because of other people that have a job similar to mine. They're called IPSs. They work with a variety of school districts. But because I work only here in Santa Rosa City Schools, I already have established relationships, and things that need to get done in terms of services for our migrant students can happen a little bit faster because I kind of know the systems here. The work and the district service agreement has four main categories. It's working with the tutors, speech and debate, apparent advisory committee, and summer school. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail about those four as we move through the presentation. Finally, another aspect of this job is relationship building with students through site visits and meetings with our migrant education advisor program specialists. I've noticed there's been a lot of talk about counselors tonight, and so the MEPs, the migrant education advisor program specialists, they are at Sonoma State, and they're studying to be counselors, and they're at our middle and high schools, and their primary job is to focus on the migrant students at their particular site. So every time I go to a particular site and I have questions or I want to meet the migrant students, I talk with the MEP, and the MEPs are usually there around three days a week. So one of the biggest aspects of what happens with our supplemental services is tutoring. This year, we had around 15 tutors from our district. These are teachers that stay after school that tutor migrant students. They represented seven elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. Part of my role is site visits. Those site visits kind of come in two different categories. The first is to observe the tutors and also tutor students, so direct services. And the second is, I did site visits around February, because I kind of keep a track of how much money we've spent, and there was still money left over. So in February, when I did site visits, I was just sort of marketing to see whether or not there were other teachers interested. So I would sit in the teacher's lounge at lunchtime, talk about migrant education, and that was fruitful, because I was able to get some more tutors by doing that and doing site visits and chatting with the teachers, because a lot of people are not that educated on migrant education. And I was a migrant ed tutor last year, and some of the information I've learned with this job I wasn't aware of. And I think one of the biggest accomplishments that has happened this year is I was able to hold a tutoring meeting where all of the tutors from our district got together, and they were able to share what they had been doing. Last year, when I was a migrant ed tutor, that didn't happen. So this was an opportunity for them to truly collaborate and walk away with some ideas that they wouldn't have had. In addition to that, there was a speaker from our regional office who talked about the history of migrant education, so tutors kind of walked away with a little bit more of that idea. And I also had a student speaker who went to one of our migrant ed summer camps at Sacramento State, and that was a pretty big deal, because for many of our migrant families, they're not used to being away from home, and the idea of going to a summer camp for two weeks was a great experience, and he was really inspiring, and the tutors were really interested in his presentation as well. Another aspect is speech and debate. This is an awesome program. It gives our migrant students opportunities for public speaking, as well as being able to support either side of an issue. We have a speech and debate team at Elsie Allen High School, and it is coached by Tomas Sanchez, who is a counselor at Elsie Allen High School, and he does a great job with them. So that picture is a little blurry, but this is the team, and this is a practice session at Sonoma State that was getting them ready for a state competition. And their topic was whether or not gun legislation reduced violent crime. I always find it interesting about debate, that no matter what your personal side is, they have to be well-versed on both sides of an issue. Another aspect, a big part of my job, as well as our migrant community, is the parent advisory committee. This committee has around six meetings per year, and here's a picture of one of our meetings. And this was a particularly interesting meeting, because we had a speaker from the Child-Parent Institute, and this was also on that Immigration Day, so I was worried that nobody was going to show up, but I had a good turnout, because I was able to give away a bicycle at this meeting because of relationships I built within our district. I was visiting with Bonnie Rains and one of my colleagues, Santa Rosa Middle School. We were visiting the art teacher. She had these old bikes in the back of our room, and I asked, would you be interested in donating one of these to our migrant education program? And she said yes. So that night, someone won a bicycle, which was really exciting. Also, another really important aspect of my parent advisory committee meetings is that we had a meeting very soon after the presidential election. I am in charge of arranging speakers. The very first meeting we have is apparent needs survey. But right after the election, Rafael Vasquez came to speak, and he was talking about the rights that undocumented, some of our parents are documented, some are undocumented, but the rights that undocumented have, and what to do in case of an emergency or a situation that may arise. And I really feel like they left that particular meeting feeling knowledgeable and empowered and knowing that they have rights, and I think that's an important aspect. There's a lot of summer programming for migrant education. These include summer school and our Santa Rosa Junior College Adelante. Our summer school is something that I'll be working with this year. It'll be pre-kindergarten through fifth grade at Lincoln Elementary, and the principal will be Aida Diaz. We've been advertising that via letters. It will be project-based. It will be very fun and engaging, and I will be onsite daily to help with data collection and small group instruction and other needs. Adelante is a six-week credit recovery program where they can gain credits, increase their grade point average, and it's a six-week program at the JC. Last year, I was able to attend their Noche de Padres, and it was like a talent show, and all of the classes spoke about what they've been learning, and they had a Ballet Fuglórico, and it's a big deal, and it was really enjoyable. And so that's part of our migrant program, too. I mentioned the summer camp. So here's a picture from the summer camp. In this summer camp, they're gone for two weeks. They learn leadership, they're very motivated, and they feel very inspired, and I think at the end of going to something like that, they feel like college is a viable option for them. Okay, and I do have, here comes the technology. Hopefully, the movie is going to work, but I have it on my flash drive if it doesn't. This is a two-minute video of some migrant students in our district that I've interviewed. I think I may have to go back to the flash drive, which I might have to.
So I was born here, and when I was four years old, I went to Mexico. Then I came back like one month later. And then when I was like seven, I went back, and I was staying there like for four or five years. Yeah, like four years. And I came back when I was, yeah, last year. My dad didn't like study at all. I think he left school when he was like in third grade, and mom, she finished middle school. I want to go to a college and like take two years, and then like take that to a university to stay two years. Like I want to like, not construction, but to make something, like make things.
I'm Alejandra Cruz.
And you're from Mexico?
Sí.
What part?
Michigan. I wanted to go to Santa Rosa Junior College.
And what do you want to study?
I'm not sure. There are a lot of things I want to do.
And after you go to junior college, do you want to continue?
Maybe I'll go to work. I want to be a parent to my parents.
What do you think about that? I think about my parents. How they've been.
Your parents are in Guatemala?
Yes. I live with my brother and my brother. I want to continue to learn, because I want to be a parent. Yes, that's what I want. To continue in life and to help my parents. That's what I want.
Do you want to stay here for years?
Yes. I want to stay here for years. I want to help my parents. That's what I want.
Do you want to stay here for years?
Yes. I want to stay here for years. I want to thank my college, who always helps me, always gives me advice, and sometimes I want to help. Always with some words that sometimes I miss.
I want to be a mathematician.
Oh, yes. After the piano, what do you want to do?
At college, you go to high school. And then they give you like a program for ECM. And then they give you a free year in college.
Yeah. We really appreciate you taking time to meet us.
That's it?
Thank you so much, Greg. And now we'll turn it over to the board for any comments or questions. And we would like to recommend that you approve our service district agreement so we can continue to have this program for our migrant ed students. Director Fong, then Director Kristoff.
Sarah, thank you and Greg, thank you for bringing this to us because, yes, working with migrant ed sometimes it's in the shadows and no one knows what's going on. And having you to Tosa, good job because I just know how much more understanding there is for kids and parents and working with the MEEP counselors and sites. It's great. When we're talking, I'm very proud of this. I'm very proud of this program. I'm proud of the partnerships because when we're talking about what we do to increase college-going culture and readiness and saving kids' lives, really keeping them in school, this is awesome. Those parent, that's a lot of people. That's a lot, there are a lot of parents at that meeting. So thank you very much for the work and I will definitely be supporting, of course, this.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Director Kristoff and Director Anderson.
Just want to thank you very much for what you do. I do have a question. Are current policies affecting the numbers at all? Can you see this at this time visibly? Federal policy is not our policy.
So what I've heard from Mrs. Scully, and she is an excellent teacher at LC Allen High School, is that she has been getting a lot more students right now. So it seems like there are more students coming, you know, maybe before the wall is built, kind of thing. So that's, so I've heard an increase at LC Allen in particular.
Director Anderson.
So I first met Greg at a California Association for the gifted meeting, actually, and so which is very exciting because I think we do need to acknowledge that those kids are in every population, including the immigrant, or migrant population. So I've always appreciated his interest in making sure that we serve those kids as well. And I guess I'd like to connect it back to the earlier item and just say, I hope we keep making sure that we are identifying our, you know, high-level learners in the migrant population as we can.
Yes, important, very important.
Thank you.
Director Carl and Director Sheffield.
Thanks. What involvement do we have with the Butte County Office of Education? Do we still, are we still running the program through them?
Yes, but I, so I go to a lot of those meetings for Butte County because most of the people that work in migrant education have a BECO, Butte County email, basically. And so there are meetings where I go to where I get a lot of information about the programs that are coming up, about our summer programming, about the, I forgot to say this. We also have a Washington DC trip that's coming up for seventh graders. And I get information about that as well as, and that information gets disseminated at the parent advisory meetings as well. So that really, I am sort of like the go-between. I go to those meetings, but I work in our district.
Okay. And are there accountability issues relative to the federal funding that we have to, that we have to deal with? Or do they just give it to us and we work with Butte County and other offices of education to figure out what makes the most sense and what works? What responsibility is there back to the federal government from an accountability standpoint?
Yes, so at the tutoring meeting I talked about, we did, there's a data that we have at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, so pre- and post-test data. So there's a lot of documentation that goes back to the state or the migrant education program itself. And I'm sure that they want to see growth. But the district service agreement is pretty much detail-oriented. And so it talks about how the allocations of the monies are spent. And so they look at that. It goes through our regional office, which is the Butte County people, and then they approve it, and then it goes on to the state.
And do we take that data and assess ourselves in terms of what's working and what's not? And are we nimble enough to make changes in response to that data?
I mean, that's part, I mean, this is my first year doing this job. But yes, without a doubt, that's, it's part of what I'm working on right now. When the tutoring is completed, our summer program is completed, is to be reflective and look at the data and see what was successful about this year and what should be changed for next year to make sure that data in every way is increasing.
Good, I appreciate that, Greg. It actually would be nice to get a report back after you have done that and see, you know, what's happened over the course of the year. And I don't pretend that we ought to add it to the agenda as another report, but maybe as, at least as an informational item. And if board members have questions, we can bring you back and talk about it. So, thank you.
Definitely. And I would say that the tutoring that happened last year with migrant education, I do have that pre- and post-test data. And every student improved. I mean, I would like to say that it was, I think it was primarily was because they were in tutoring because oftentimes in tutoring, for example, last year I had a sixth-grade student who was from Mexico, had just gotten to the country recently. And his dad came up to me and said, really, this is the only time he gets a chance to learn because in sixth grade, the content was very, very difficult. And so tutoring him, it was a little bit more customized. And so all of the data went up with all of the migrant students that received tutoring last year.
Great, thank you.
Director Sheffield.
Just want to say thank you. It's really impressive that you do so much with so little dollars. And just want to acknowledge Annie Scully and visiting her ELD class. And this is a class population, there's over 20 students in the class. And a lot of these students are new to the country. I mean, they're just coming and have been enrolled for one semester. And the challenges that she has to face with a full class size. And she's teaching English, English, English. And it's just really impressive to sit back and watch.
And they're very happy with her. Yeah, the students love being there.
And one of the testimonials from the film.
Yeah, the Guatemalan boy is from her class.
Yeah, yeah.
If I could make one other comment too. So this last week, I was following a student around just to kind of get the view of what a day in the life of a migrant student would be like at Comstock. And I just wanted to kind of publicly state that school was so welcoming and I had the best visit there. The kid felt very connected with me by the end of our time together and it was very enjoyable.
Okay, well, you have a lot of support here. It's really important work that you're doing. Thank you for the great report. With that, I will.
I'd like to move item F4.
Sheffield.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Kristoff.
No, I think it was Director Carl. It was quick.
Flip a coin.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. F5, discussion item, the out-of-country teacher employment at the French-American Charter School update.
Good evening. Tonight, Director Cindy Brennan from Human Resources will give us a report on the out-of-country teacher challenge at the French-American Charter Schools. So I turn it over to Director Brennan. I have to, okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Santa Rosa City Schools is made up of 26 different schools, of which five are charter schools. Our French-American Charter School is extremely unique because so many of our teachers who teach at that school come from out of the country. And this represents wonderful opportunities and some significant challenges. If you've been lucky enough to visit the French-American Charter School, you've probably been enchanted by the students who are speaking French as if it were their first language, when in fact, it's often their second or third language. The success of this school is attributed to many people, including our native French speakers who come to this country from thousands of miles away to teach our students and undergo some significant challenges that I want to talk about. As we come into the close of our fifth year in operation at the French-American Charter School, I'm here tonight to look at the school from the perspective of hiring, onboarding, credentialing, and helping these teachers maintain their compliance during their time here. Our native French speakers are a multifaceted group. Some of them have studied in the United States before. Some of them have visited and some have never been here before. Some of them come as husband-and-wife teams. And many of them bring their own children who become students at the French-American Charter School. They are certainly not just coming from France, but they come from countries like Guinea, Dubai, and Kuwait. Most come knowing that they will only be here for three to five years, but they bring an incredible richness of experience to us during their short tenure. Most of the presentation that I'm going to make is going to focus on those out-of-country teachers who will be with us for those short years and then return to their home countries or go on to another country. So from the very start, it's a more difficult process than it is for most of our teachers to be hired and onboarded. First, our interviews are conducted by Skype. And because of our time change difference, many of them are tucked back at home in their house slippers and we're conducting the interview and getting to see all their backgrounds in their homes. And it's kind of cool. If we want to go ahead and make an offer to the teacher, we do a tentative offer, even though we've never met them, and then the real work begins. The first thing is the translation of their educational documents. This Commission on Teacher Credentialing only authorizes a certain number of agencies to be able to do this translation work, and none of them are great. We've actually been through already four different companies and we're back to our first company again. The Commission is looking for very specific information on the degree that the teachers attained, the student teaching experience, and then their actual teaching license. The candidate will have to pay between $450 and $600 just to get this translation done. And that's if they don't need it in a quick period of time. If they do, it's going to be a couple hundred more dollars for them to get this done. Next is obtaining the visa. We work through the Cordell Hall Foundation in the United States and they help with this process. The teacher who's coming over first needs to report to the embassy in the country in which they're living to get this process started. One of the agreements with the Cordell Hall Foundation is that the teacher must be in paid status from day one of school, no matter if their credential has come through or not. So what that means to the district is that we often have the out-of-country teacher in the classroom and we have a certificated substitute in the classroom with the teacher while we're waiting on the credential to come through. The next kind of stumbling block is that these teachers coming in from out of the country are usually not done with their assignments in their country where they're living until the end of June or mid-July even, which means they arrive here in late July, early August, and then have to get all of this done once they arrive. Last is that because their schools are closed down where they've worked, we can't get an assessment of their number of years of experience. So they're often held at a salary placement that's not reflective of their years of experience until we can get that information when their schools reopen in September. So by the time our teachers have set foot on American soil and we've gotten to meet them, they've likely spent about $6,000 in travel, securing housing, and their pre-arrival documents. The first step for them is to go to the social security office. That process can take up to two weeks for them to receive that social security card. And nothing can move forward until that card is obtained. Next, they're going to need fingerprints. They go get their fingerprints for the Sonoma County Office of Education and for Santa Rosa City Schools. Agencies are not allowed to share fingerprint results, so the teachers have to purchase multiple copies of their fingerprint. During all this process, they're going through their normal onboarding process as a new teacher at Santa Rosa City Schools. We do conduct their orientations in French, which is a real bonus to them. Once their fingerprints clear and we take them up to the Sonoma County Office of Education, the credential analysts up there do an analysis of everything that we've presented to them to get their credential. And on a good day, we leave with a little pink slip of paper that's their temporary county certificate that will authorize them to teach in the classroom while the Commission on Teacher Credentialing is processing their final preliminary credential. The CTC rejects between 10% and 20% of these applications, even when our county office has deemed it a complete application. So at that point in time, we have to go back and do more research. And again, the district often has to put a substitute teacher in the classroom along with our out-of-country teacher. This year, we have a new hurdle to overcome. The Commission on Teacher Credentialing is now requiring that our out-of-country teachers have what we call our certificate of clearance on file with the Commission before our county office is able to issue that temporary county certificate. So what this means, we think, is that they're going to actually have to get their manual fingerprint cards done while they're in France, apply for this document online, and then have that all ready so that when they arrive here, that's already posted on the CTC site. We're not sure what kind of a delay this is going to represent yet because we are just in the process of beginning our new teacher processing for next year. The California Basic Skills Test, we fondly call the CBEST, is a big area of challenge for our out-of-country teachers. This is made up of three sections, reading, math, and writing. The reading and math portions are generally no problem for them to pass, but the writing portion is very difficult. We've offered tutoring and training, but it still is a big challenge for a lot of our out-of-country teachers. So if they cannot pass this test by the end of their first year on staff, we actually have to go through a fairly cumbersome process to apply for a waiver with the Commission, which has to go through our Board of Education before it goes to the Commission. If we don't do this and we're not in compliance, it can actually affect our certification of our attendance, which is a big issue. Last, these teachers technically don't have to pay into the state teachers' retirement system if they are not going to be retiring from STIRS. So we're currently working on an appeal with the county office of education and STIRS to be able to have these teachers not have to have this payroll deduction if they're going to be returning to their home country. This would be a huge bonus for not only the teachers, but for the district. It would represent about a 10% savings to the teachers and 12.5% savings to the district. So let's talk about turnover. Due to the normal international cycle and the limited terms of the visas for our out-of-country teachers, we know we're only going to have them here for three to five years. In fact, this year, 12 of our 28 certificated staff from the French-American Charter School are going to be departing at the end of this year. So if you look at the graphic above, you can, or behind, wherever you're looking, you can see that the green turnover bars for the French-American Charter School, due to that normal international cycle, is going to represent a higher turnover than the blue bars, which is the normal turnover for Santa Rosa City Schools' normal certificated staff. On a positive note, we do have offers out to teachers for next year for 10 of the 12 vacancies. So that is positive movement. All teachers in California who have any English language learners in their classroom have to have the appropriate English language learner authorization. This has been another area of challenge for our out-of-country teachers, but we actually do have some good news to report. We combed through a lot of documents. We combed through a lot of documents on the CTC for out-of-country prepared teachers, and we were able to find an exception to the need to have the English language learner authorization for those teachers who come in from out of the country. So we worked pretty diligently with our county office staff and the CTC to be able to receive this exemption for those teachers coming from out of the country who are instructing in French only at the French American Charter School. So as you can see from the chart above, this will represent not only a time savings but a cost savings to those teachers. And just a little bit about the appeal. The reason the appeal was successful is due to the curriculum design at the French American Charter School. So as I said, the teachers who are coming in from out of country are doing their instruction 100% in French, and then there are teachers who are providing instruction in English language and other subjects who are fully credentialed and have their appropriate English language learner authorization. Also, as you can see from the graph, the number of instructional minutes that are provided in English increases as the grade level increases. So a couple of successes to share. We have developed a very comprehensive packet that goes out on our EdJoin recruiting site, which is our predominant recruiting site. It provides the teachers with information on not only all the costs that they would have to pay to become part of this program, but also the testing and the compliance that they would have to go through. This is automatically sent to anyone who applies for the French American Charter School, and it's sent to them in French if they choose to have it delivered that way. Next is after five years, we've really been able to streamline the credentialing process, and we have a very knowledgeable county office staff to assist us now. We were the first public setting to offer this type of program, so we've all been learning together on this. The next thing is the addition of the Common Language Test that will assess English proficiency. So this will hopefully be able to help us bring teachers in who have a better success rate of passing the CBEST on all three sections. Last, the Human Resources Department has implemented a fully automated electronic onboarding system that we're just rolling out right now. Works kind of like a DocuSign process where the paperwork is all just digitally signed. And the nice thing about this is it can be completed when the teachers are still out of country. We'll be using it for everybody, both certificated and classified, but they can complete their documents electronically on any device in any location. And I'd also like to give a recognition to Esperanza Tupin, who is our Human Resources Technician for the French American Charter School. She's worked very hard to help streamline many processes and to really help these teachers feel welcomed when they arrive and to help them as they go through all of these compliance challenges during their tenure here. So in closing, although we continue to face new challenges and existing challenges, we're constantly looking for ways to help the experience at our French American Charter School be an excellent one for both students and staff. So merci et bonsoir.
You have questions or comments? Director Kristoff?
Thank you, Cindy, very much. It's, I have a lot of questions, but I think it's beyond the scope of the presentation. I think in the future, I would like to see kind of revisiting, an update about the whole school regarding how, you know, how it relates to the goals that were set forth, you know, being bilingual, meeting the criteria to enter a French school fully fluent by seventh grade. There were a lot of representations that were made in the charter and in the discussions of the school we haven't had a chance to talk about for a while, and I would really like to do that. I just have one basic question. Could we apply this kind of procedure to all of our teachers in Santa Rosa right now? What would it do to us as far as hiring expenses? I mean, you know, obviously, this is more resources, more time and energy spent on finding teachers. It's got to be a string on personnel.
It definitely occupies more time in the Human Resources Department than a teacher not coming in from out of the country. But again, every year, we learn new ways to help the process be streamlined, and with people like Esperanza and our county office staff, we are doing wonderful compared to five years ago when this was all new to us.
Judge Karl.
Thank you, Cindy. Comprehensive report. You have 10 offers out. You need two more, right? How does it compare this year and previous years in terms of having offers out in April? What does that look like in previous years, and what's our batting average on offers made and acceptances? So how far behind the eight ball are we? Are we way ahead of where we normally are?
You answered that. It feels like we're way ahead, as we have been in the past. This is a great place to be in with only needing to find two more teachers. I think that the team and also Principal John Stone has really been diligent about making sure that they are not stuck in June not having teachers. So I think this year, a lot of progress was made collectively as a team.
So maybe I misunderstood. I understood we had 10 offers out. In my world, you make an offer, and sometimes people accept, and sometimes they don't. Do we have 10 acceptances?
We do have 10 acceptances, right?
Oh, super. Okay, Greg.
And there's another offer. So now we have one.
Okay, for purposes of the seven people watching on TV, the answer was that all 10 offers were accepted, and we have another one out, which we're hoping is going to be accepted.
And that's a good clarification.
Let's sit down and use the microphone.
Everybody can hear you in the room, but until the Giants game is over, we won't have a lot of people watching.
You want me on TV? Okay. But anyway, I feel like we're ahead. We've got an early start, and the type of teachers we've hired are very unique because their English is strong, and that, as you can see, they have to pass the CBEST. So we have a variety of teachers coming. Right now, two are already in Oakland, California, so they're already onboarded. One, today, we're making an offer, a teacher in Louisiana, who will, she's been teaching there for years, and she's French. She will be easy compared to the rest. She'll still have to do the CLAD and all that. And the idea was to hire teachers that would be here for five years, not just three to five, but five. And so we have a group coming in that are quite good, one from Switzerland, most coming in from France, but they're all over the world: Egypt, Tunisia. They're, they have an adventurous spirit, and they were selected because they're great teachers, but also the factor that I had to go through as culture shock, I don't think, I think they'll hit the ground running a lot better than someone who's never left France. So a lot of criteria went into our Skype interviews, and we had a lot of English questions. We really pinpointed the kind of profile of a teacher we want for the school, so we will not have the turnover that you can see that we're having now.
Great, very helpful. Thank you.
Because I just don't know enough. Is there something in the charter that says they have to be native speakers, the teachers? And we don't have any that are local at all, because I know we can't find French teachers at silver high schools.
I'd have to go back and look at the charter, but I do not believe that it says that. But as you know, to be successful, dual immersion, you have to have the language, so.
And we're not facing this kind of issue at Cesar Chavez?
Not to the degree, however, as bilingual schools, specifically to Spanish, are becoming quite popular in the state of California, finding Spanish-speaking teachers is more of a challenge. And she too, Rebecca Rocha, the principal at Cesar Chavez, also did go out early to be able to find teachers.
Yeah, we're not having to go out of country yet for Spanish-speaking teachers. That's the difference.
And then I'm going to give that a shout out to Director Brennan because your continuity in your position has created this, and I know you do really great work, so thank you for your diligent and dedicated work and that consistency and your attention to detail. Having gotten to work with you is just excellent. And I love having bilingual education, and I think that we should be putting education, world language education down in K, down in elementary, not wait till, whatever, we wait till seventh grade or something.
Director Pugh.
How many students are enrolled in the French American Charter School?
We just checked. I think we're at, we've gone from 493 down to maybe 489. It's fluctuating, so that's where we are, about there, almost 490, I'd say.
And we no longer offer seventh or eighth grade?
No, it's TK through sixth.
Right.
And, but we are growing, and next year, I projected we will be at least 500 or more than 500 if the numbers hold.
So there's significant interest in this from the kids?
There is. There's waiting lists, and it's hard to get in, and we just, we're going to be full up in many of the grade levels.
When you say a waiting list, about how many would that be?
Well, the waiting list, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's pretty substantial in the kindergarten. We have waiting lists in mostly the primary grades because the class size is 24, so we have waiting lists up to third grade. And it varies, not as many in the second and third grade as we do in kindergarten and first.
The population of students is quite diverse, right?
Very diverse. Yeah, we just did a look at nationalities, and we're about 28 different countries.
28 different countries?
Right. I know, which doesn't really, it doesn't show up in the language surveys that we do during the self-testing, but we did our own check on everything, and a lot of them are, a lot of the families are trilingual, maybe the husband's from Canada, his wife is from West Africa. No, we have that kind of thing going on a lot. And if you saw the, if you looked at the slide, you can see it in the slides.
How many of these students, out of about the 500 students that you have, are within our district boundaries, and how many come from outside?
There, I don't have the statistics in front of me right now. I mean, but it's, we do have, we do have students coming from out of the, out of the district, yes, we do.
A significant number, would you say, like 10%, 20%, something like that?
Probably about that. I'd have to look, you know. And I think that it was brought up that it would be good to have another follow-up about our school, and those are the kinds of things that we can bring next time, the data that you want to look at. Yeah, because, and really, this year, we are doing, the district's doing a lot of work to have students go to their neighborhood school, and the open enrollment has been very successful, and a lot of students are choosing to go on to the school just down the street, Slater and Santa Rosa Middle School. We're seeing a lot more of that going on. But we do have numbers coming from Hillsburg, Windsor, Novato. Those communities do come in because of our program.
It'd be good to see those numbers, I think. With regard to some of the problems we have with the induction process or the onboarding process, it sounds like the majority of issues is potentially resolved. There's still a couple out there, but it looks like you got a good head start on it. Is there, we could always, I don't know if this would be appropriate or a possible solution, but we can always ask the State Board of Education for a waiver law. Given the fact that our school district is so unique, and I don't believe there's another one of these French-American, public French-American charter schools in the United, well, definitely not in California. I was wondering if there's a, well, there is San Francisco, but it's not, it's not, it's not a charter.
That's private.
Right, private. So maybe if there are hurdles to overcome, we could look through the waiver process with the State Board of Education, because I think it would be welcome there because, one, it's creating a difference, creating choice in our district, and also with a great number of students of interest, certainly I would think we could try doing that. So the waiver process isn't that complex, but it would be working through the superintendent's office. Thank you. Great report.
I have one question about the pool of applicants you have. When you, how many applicants are you having for a position, and how does it compare to the regular pool of applicants we get looking for teachers?
We, of course, we use EdJoin, but we also have a French, we contact to another agency, and we get applicants that come through, and then we direct them to EdJoin. So we had 83 applicants, and we had a great pool to work with, and they were coming from all over the world. Yeah, so that made it pretty easy. And we are still interviewing and having a pool I call Plan B. If there's, as Cindy pointed out, there could be some last-minute things that might happen. So we have other applicants out there that we're going to interview in the next two weeks from that pool of 83.
Good. And then just to address how that compares to other positions, it really depends. For elementary schools, we can get up to 100, 200 applications for a given position, whereas if we're recruiting for a position, a single subject in high school, it could be a very small pool of perhaps 10.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
So I want to acknowledge your work, Mr. John Stone. You have made a tremendous difference at the charter this year, and your network of people that you know and your experience in the international world has really benefited the French Charter School, so I want to thank you for that. And I know that Director Fong thanked Director Brennan, but having watched her go through this whole process with Esperanza Tupin, I can tell you that her dedication to this district is unheralded because it was quite a challenge to get to where we are right now. And I only really got to see it this last year. So Cindy, you talked about the HR department. It's really you and Jason. No, it's the others as well, but, I mean, you've done a tremendous amount of work, and I greatly, greatly appreciate all you've done, so I wanted to thank you.
And I'd like to thank Cindy as well, and also I want to agree with Esperanza. I'm on the phone with Esperanza probably every day since August, and she's always really open, answers her phone, we chat, and then we solve problems, and if she can't, oh, call Cindy or get ahold of Jason. So it's really been a very nice relationship that we have going, and I really appreciate all the hard work the HR has done to make my job easy. I just had to give them the candidates. And I think one thing that I need to point out that's different, I'm finding out from Cordell Hall that does the J1 visas, we were ahead of the game on clearing their credentials. So the ones that we've offered and they've accepted are already being cleared by, they're already being done right now because there's one step that is, I thought was really important. I sent all of their transcripts, resumes to Cordell Hall first. I had them look at it. Can we go ahead and make an offer? They said yes, and then I sent in the offer, and then now it's just like, they're just being approved daily. So that's going to make, and I think if somebody asks, are you ahead, are you behind? I feel really confident we're ahead, but this is my first time doing it, so I really don't know.
All right. Thank you so much for your hard work and this good report, and I think definitely you heard from a few board members, and I would agree that it'd be good to have a comprehensive report about the school at some point.
I will tell you that their charter is up for renewal, and they'll be coming back in 2019, 2020, so we can either wait for them, or we can also just do an interim report.
Yeah, we, I think we should do a report leading up to that.
All right. Thank you. KF6, an action item, proposed grant application to the California Learning Communities for School Success Program.
President Close, Superintendent Ken Murren, and board members. I'm bringing to you today the request to begin to write a grant. Unfortunately, unlike the previous grant today, the College Readiness, we've only had about 10 days since this grant became operational. So it came operational, probation office that we work with our colleagues, Lisa Valente and Kids Keeping Kids at School, brought it to me very quickly, which I put us on the board agenda. So we just have to have the preliminary... So we just have to have the preliminaries of moving forward on a grant. This grant was funded from Prop 47, which was the proposition in 2014 with that transferred inmates and reduced sentences and saved money from the state and moved resources to the county. So what they did from the state is they're moving money from the state from the reduced sentences for probation and then school, CDE is then offering the grant for school districts. So through their, through the requirements of the grant are to basically create a prevention system that prevents absenteeism, that uses any existing structures that you may have in your, in your district to support the reduction of chronic absenteeism. And I want to make a quick note here, chronic absenteeism is the, is one of the California dashboards now, it's one of the requirements, and there's a shift here from the conversation of truancy to chronic absenteeism. And that's significant for a number of reasons. We have previous data and lots of data from truancies, but truancies do not match into school days attendance, as an example. You can be, you can be truant and miss a period of school, but still retain ADA for that rest of the day. At high school, you could be missed two periods, but you're there for four. So you're truant for two periods, however, you still gained ADA and that student, and so that's a different kind of analysis and moving to a chronic absenteeism really ties in succinctly with our ADA and there's a real nice connection that way, different than truancy. And that's what this grant begins to do. So we can begin our work to really address the chronic absenteeism, of which data is not yet available on CDE, it's a, it's a work in progress and so we are kind of at the, at the head of trying to create that data. So what we would like to do is begin to create a grant that we would bring back to you. The grant is due on May 10th, so between tonight and May 10th, we have to put together a grant and just like you saw with Ms. Patini's grant, there's a lot we have to do. We have an idea of what we want to structure the grant as, what we want to do with it is, in this three-year grant, we could get as much as $800,000 for three years. That money requires a 20% in-kind, which we know we can produce by using things like our family engagement facilitators and the money we already allocate through LCAP in our, even in our attendance that we currently do. So what we want to do with that group is they would be the on-the-ground folks that really work hand-in-hand at school sites. We want to create some positions that would be a coordinator and liaisons to those folks. We want to build a structure where we're going to work with families in their feeder pattern and create probably four to five positions that'll be from the district site that would come out and work with family engagement folks to improve the systems at their school. I think one of the, one of the strengths we have in this, in receiving this grant is our BEST+ program. So the multi-tiered systems that we have in BEST+, we want to apply to the attendance side of it. And that means in creating structures where, what do we do at a school for all students in attendance? What do we do for some? What do we do for a few? And so by building that, these, these people funded from the grant would help school sites and their best teams develop those structures. They're doing it already in the behavior side of it, we want to do is take that same kind of monitoring and data and put it to the attendance side of it. We also want to use a model from Keeping Kids in School Grant of case management. And so what we want to do is really develop how to case manage, how it works in our system, and then how train our family engagement facilitators to really do a good job with that. At the district level, we want to have a position that would be a coordinator, kind of like a SARB, again, if you're looking at our tiers in the triangle, at the top end of that, for the few, we really need to do a better job of making sure the families that come to that level get resources in the county, get access to the care they may need. Through our restorative and trauma-informed lens, we want to be able to provide the things that we need to do for that family. And so we know that there's greater resources in the county that we would need to coordinate and provide that. So that's part of the structure we're going to design in this grant. In the next less than 10, 12 days, we need to get as much input as possible and we recognize that. So we already met with principals, we had a meeting the other day, we have meetings just on the calendar already for school secretaries, ESAMs, we have our district leadership team that'll be on May 1, so we'll gather as briefly as we can, just a skeleton of input. We have an existing truancy and chronic absenteeism committee, we'll try to get them back together here in the next 10 days and develop a structure like this. If the grant gets funded, it'll get funded, we'll know by May 26th and we would then bring it back to the board for actual approval to accept the grant on June, on your June 14th board meeting. And so in between, we'll do as much as we can to gather data and input, put that structure together and come back with a grant that we think would be taking us to the next level in absenteeism, chronic absenteeism and reducing our levels. And as many questions as I could try to answer, I will.
Thank you. Questions? Director Pugh. One's so polite.
You're first. Thank you for the report. I didn't realize that we had this level of a significant problem in the district until I read the report itself and to see that we have a truancy rate of 41% in the high school district seems excessive to me, seemed huge. And with the documentation that the superintendent provided me in a conversation, we have some sites that are over 100% truant. I don't know how you get to over 100% truant. So could you explain to me, what does it take for me to become truant in our district?
So the system of truancy, as I mentioned, so it's either a day or periods of day where you are unexcused from school, not a valid doctor's note, parent doesn't call in and say they are not coming to school today for X reason. That is, that is an example of a truancy. So a failure to contact the system, it looks like you're cut or truant, or you have no valid excuse once you come in. So that is an example of a truant. When, when there are levels then where we get involved and we declare somebody as a truant. So at three days of truancy, and in secondary school, the periods add up to days, six times that, you get declared truant, that's a truancy letter, truancy one letter, you're declared a truant, puts you on notice. Two years ago, we took that on at the district level and we began submitting those letters because we didn't think they were, they were, those letters are, were going out as quickly as they needed to be, so we took that on. Then you become a second truant letter and that adds six, you become another level of truancy. And that kicks in what's called a SART, a School Attendance Review Team. So at your school team, you're supposed to have a meeting with those families and really dig into what's going on with the case, what are the causes behind truancy. If that truancy team has a contract and a violation of the contract brings you to a district level called a SARB, Student Attendance Review Board. And at that level, another contract is offered, supports and systems, and then if there's continued violations, you can be reported to the district attorney.
So if I was absent one day and I didn't bring in a doctor's note or a note from my parents, because maybe my parents, I don't have any parents, or whoever it might be, or
Your guardian, yeah.
Guardian, whatever. I'm considered truant, right?
Not technically till three of those days.
Three of the days?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, and then, and then once you're a truant, you're always a truant?
For that school year.
For the school year.
The clock starts in the next school year, resets.
So, so if we have 40% of our high school population, one of our schools, 40%, that would mean that 40% of the student population was gone three days in a row, or three days without documentation.
Or periods, yes.
Or periods, right.
Yeah.
So, so how much of this is a paperwork problem? How much of it is something more than that? Do you have any clue?
Well, my experience is at Pioneer High School as an example, is, is there are some families that are easily able to access the system and call in absences and there's some that have a greater time, hard time doing that. Our calls, our system we have, our automatic guilers, the robocalls, those go out, those get some responses from parents and they call in the absence and they say, yes, my son was at home with me. So there's a, there's a degree of, not everyone has the numbers, has the contact, knows where to call. School sites send out information, please call and do your absences, there's a recorded message, attendance tech takes the, you know, takes it off every day. But I think there's some degree of, there's an excuse somewhere that the parents just aren't bringing that in. So there's that element to it. And then there's, there's the element of just, yeah, kids could pop off and go somewhere or. Truancy is also if you're greater, tardy greater than 20 minutes. So there's examples of somebody coming late, that's listed as a state truancy as well.
Right, thank you.
Director Carl.
Thanks. Couple of things, Steve. I've always understood that there is a certain amount of paperwork that can pull a lot of kids out of that and our numbers obviously could be better if parents were educated about the impact of it, understood that it is actually a big deal, that we, we care about it and that there are oftentimes valid reasons and in fact, times when kids have gotten homework assignments and various things like that, and so they're making it up and it doesn't have an impact on, on grades. That's a portion that you, that you'd like to figure out ways to better able, sites to be able to get that paperwork done and wipe that percentage off. That would help, clearly.
Yes.
And any strategies that we have with respect to that, we want to implement in whatever fashion we can. Where there's a significant concern is the kids that are just blowing it off and the parents that don't know about it, or the parents that don't care about it. And, and you know, different strategies obviously need to be employed because those are the kids we're potentially losing. And losing from a standpoint that they're not getting the education that they should and they're not going to hit the grad rates, it'd be interesting to see what those graduation rates are in relative terms to the truants. And I assume that our new student information system is going to give us a lot more data to work from to be able to drill down on that impact. And I, and I think we can do that now or over the course of the next few months as that's, as that's playing into, into the data system. I would like that to happen and drill down on, regardless of whether we get this grant or not.
Sure.
The other thing that I found interesting about the report was you identified nine potential strategies that will be drafted into this grant and I, I think those are great-looking strategies and obviously somebody spent some time and energy thinking about this. The issue for me is what, do we have any sense of our likelihood of getting the grant? Is there any information out there about that?
No, we're going to be using a grant writer that has been successful with us before. She wrote the transformation grant, she has a lot of connections and she wrote similar grants for probation. So that, that's always a good sign when you have somebody that has that capability. As she reviews it with us, as we go forward on that, we think our BEST+ component of it, I mean, the structure that we have already existing, I think will be great for us, that we have that ability to use existing structures and teams that are already in place and just add, okay, now let's have the conversation about attendance from where we had before. And the other thing is I think our work through restorative and trauma-informed care, well, we'll publish that, we'll obviously make, make good strides in the grant, but how we're looking to be really preventative about this and not punitive, and I think that will be strong for us.
Okay. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
To that, I wanted to say that the grant writer was the person who wrote the school transformation grant that we received. And so she took a lot of the elements, not only in that grant, but other initiatives that we're doing to build upon this, so that it's not anything really new, it's really just about creating structures to implement the work.
Right.
So we use the word structure a lot today.
Yeah, I mean, clearly we have a base that we've been working on over the course of the last couple of years that, you know, we're looking for that next jump-off point. And we're going to know relatively quickly. I mean, there's no question in the world, we ought to go for this and I think the strategies that you've got that are listed give me a lot to hope for with respect to having real impact and seeing some numbers next year have some changes. Let's get this back at the end of May, let's see that we have it. If we don't have it, I would like to have another meeting, June, July, August, whatever, with the base of the strategies and what you guys have written into the grant as to what we can implement and how we can implement it and what support you may need from the board to be able to make that work because we still want to address the problem. So let's keep the fingers crossed, work hard, get this grant, but if we don't, let's, let's not back off of what work is being done, what things we've identified as being potential real impacts.
Yeah, I mean, and to that point, we are doing much work in many areas on attendance already. We just are, we just had what's called P2, which is our springtime certification and in that number, based on from last year, we've risen more than 1.5% in our ADA and that's actually means money coming into us.
That's, that's, it's actually a big number.
It is.
That's a real big number.
Certainly is.
Okay, thank you.
Director Anderson. Good luck getting this done by May 10. I guess you're not going to be sleeping or doing much fun
We have good health.
in the next couple of weeks, so, go Steve. And I remember during the LCFF process that this was a huge item of concern, truancy, and at that time, we talked a lot about trying to change the culture in kindergarten, you know, that have families coming in and trying to, just like your item number two, trying to reach out to families and trying to get that understanding. And so to me, it reminds me of the college and career readiness aspect of it's a culture change. And so I would just ask that wherever you can push toward that front door when they first come, I think that could be really valuable.
Yeah, that's an absolute, absolutely correct. Director Pugh noted, our elementary rates are higher than our secondary. So with all the, what you expressed about kids not wanting to come to school and things, it's more of an adult issue obviously at the elementary level. One of the things we've, that was already brought out in one of my principal meetings is an effective strategy to deal with lice. So the nuance, we're already picking up from, from the school sites is that one of the biggest issues is we handle it, we do it, but when you go back to the house and there's a reinvestation, it comes back and the kids, kids keep out from school and it's a family issue. So one of the things we're going to design in this is a, is a Louse eradication program, where literally we're going to try to fund a way to help families in the house take care of the needs they have there. So that's, that's an example of really trying to be creative and reach out.
Director Fong.
I see a great coherence in what we're trying to do here in terms of LCAP and, you know, the other things that were presented tonight, every single piece of it, including this. And this is a significant grant and we're going to get it. And when we're looking at graduation rates and we're looking at, you know, the dashboard and everything in terms of truancy, we're really talking not only the daily and the cultural thing, but we're talking about chronic truancy and how that, its wellness and its family engagement and its trauma and all that, I know we're folding into what we're doing on our, the counseling, the wellness, the engagement, so, thank you, good luck. And that's, you're right, May 10th is going to come by fast, so good luck to us.
Thank you.
Director Sheffield.
Director Fong just touched upon a little bit, you talked about truancy and also in the report on chronic absenteeism and my understanding is that's three weeks in a school year?
So it's, it's defined as 10%, which in a 180-day would be 18 days.
18 days.
Yes.
And a very high percentage, I recall a report in the Press Democrat, some schools at 18%.
Yes, I believe that's accurate.
Yeah. And then when you think about the causes, maybe it is the health causes, I heard a report about dental health and some of the reasons why there is absenteeism or chronic absenteeism and something like this, a grant would really get to the root of identifying these causes. I don't think that's ever been looked at. I don't know how it would be reported, but would that be something that?
Through a referral process, so if we really are making contact and we're not using robocalls and I think that's some of the strength, that we really have to call and contact family and be in touch with them through our family engagement facilitators, we can really get to the root of what's really going on. And there are referral services that we can make families aware of, for example, like dentistry and other things. So those are free services that we just have to hook them up to and discuss and monitor it and case manage and make sure they're following up because, you know, you hand a referral, but they don't go. So that's where the case manager side of it, really make sure someone's really, you know, continue to make the phone call, continuing to come back at them, that's the, I think the key to this.
And that's what's really important is that we're doing more of, you know, the service not just to the kid and having his attendance or the service to the district, but doing service to the family.
Absolutely.
This kid is who might not be identified as having asthma or having, you know, oral health problem, he's identified and suddenly he, the family is steered to the right services. We're a great county, we have so many wonderful services, but we can't identify every student and being able to do that through, you know, a grant like this, that's really important.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is really a critical issue and it's a big grant and it looks like you guys are ready to tackle that and I look forward to it coming back and approving it, but right now we need to
So how will, how will I move and prove that the, we make the grant application?
Yes. Moved by Director Carl, second by Director Fong.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good luck. That brings us to F7. There's some really patient guys out there who've been waiting for this action item, award bid for Piner High re-roofing and HVAC project.
Good evening, President Close, Superintendent Kidmore, Board of Education. Tonight, we are bringing forward the Piner High School re-roofing and HVAC project for approval on, excuse me, on April twentieth at 2:30 PM. We received one bid from Matrix HG Incorporated. Through the evaluation of the bid, we found to be responsive and a responsible bid, and we're bringing it forward for your approval.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. Just, it seems like three million, nine, four million dollars for the roof at Piner?
And, and all HVAC replacement.
Oh, okay. HVAC?
Yes.
That's, still seems like a lot of money.
Lot of work to do at that school site.
Yeah, and then, so that, is this new HVAC in some of the buildings or is this replacement?
It's replacement of existing older failing HVAC units.
Okay, thank you.
Director Fong? So, again, we end up with one bidder. We're obviously, there was at least one instance where we had one bidder and you guys were not comfortable that the price was where it needs to be. So I appreciate that there's analysis that's clearly taking place in that regard. Is, is the environment just that bad, that just way too much work out there? Or is there anything that you think that we could do as a board, from a policy standpoint, whatever it happens to be, to increase the potential competition?
That is a major concern that we have as well, and we are evaluating the process that we went through. We felt we were in a good position when we started this process for the five school sites. We had, I'm not going to say considerable interest, but certainly interest in the mandatory walks and the contractors and construction companies that showed up for, for those. Sean with PBK, they've had similar experiences in other school districts during this time period, and they've also had experiences where they've received multiple bids. So it's something we are continuing to evaluate as we go forward with other projects.
Yeah, I think that, you know, Sean, if you've got, if you think there's anything structurally in terms of how we operate, what we do, any suggestions that you made that, that we as a board could have some impact on, there, there may be none. But I want you to, to, to understand that we understand that that's a valuable thing to do, is to have competitive bidding process. And to the extent that we can do that and, and get some of that occurring, we're obviously going to stretch our bond dollars that much more. So we're, we're open for any suggestions that you get.
I do also want to be able to add that one of the biggest things we've had, been talking to multiple contractors throughout there. And with the influx of all the work that's been going around the state, but also because of the weather, roofers can't work while it's raining. And so a lot of their projects, they were anticipating to be done at this point-
Are not.
-have pushed out. And so they just don't have the bonding capacity to be able to do these larger projects like this to be able, and so that, that's why we actually went with Matrix. They were able to have that bonding capacity and help sub out part of the roofing part where there being the prime of the HVAC.
Right, right. We, I, I think we have to assume that, that our weather patterns are changing, and so this may be the, the new norm.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Like to move the item?
Move by Director Pugh, second by Director Carl.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?